Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, August 10th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Ms. Jacobs, roll call please.
Mayor Alizas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Terpanny?
Here.
Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Commissioner Vaticios?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Melo DeCade from the Peninsula Care and Hypertension Center, following by the Pledge of Allegiance for please stand.
Let us pray. God of peace, we invite you to be present in this meeting. Give us unity of spirit and a listening presence. Come and let your wisdom fall upon us as we gather for this meeting. Give us clarity. May we have a spirit of understanding in this room and work together on our shared mission. I pray that you bless those here in the meeting and those living in Tarpon Springs. And keep us in gracious fellowship this day we pray. Amen.
Flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that items 13A and 13B, the application 21-22, at 41680 is 19, the ordinance 2021-04, land use ordinance 2021-05, rezoning second reading, and items 14A and 14B, the application 2134, South District Avenue, the ordinance 2021-07, land use and ordinance 2021-06, rezoning second reading, have been referred to September 14, 2021 regularization. And that's because the, these items must be reviewed by Pinellas County and their meeting has been changed. Also, we'd like to remind you everyone that at 7:30 PM, the public hearing portion of the meeting must begin. Once the public hearing portion is completed, we will continue the meeting from where we left off. If you look at the agenda, the, we have a special report on the Anclod dredge project briefing by Mr. Christopher Wren, which is the project manager from Army Corps of Engineers. The city attorney has requested that this item to be moved up due to the Army Corps of Engineers staff that be working on this project all day, so they'd like to do the presentation first. With that, I would like to ask Mr. Wren to come to the podium with our, Mr. Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director, I'm here to introduce Chris Wren. He's the project manager, as you said, from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. He's been with the Army as an engineer for 14 years and he's based out of the Jacksonville office. He's taken over project management as we move into the construction phase of the project. We had a very well-attended pre-construction meeting this morning with the contractor right here in this room. Very brief three-hour meeting to go through the project. And Chris can tell you a little bit more about it and he's going to give you a very brief overview and a reminder for you and the public of what the project's all about. Chris?
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you again for allowing me to speak here today. Thank you, Bob, for all the work we've put into thus far. Yeah, great meeting we had with the contractor this morning. We're looking forward to delivering this project for you all. Just a quick disclaimer, I have to say that the views I'm about to express are my own and do not necessarily represent the views of the Army or the Department of Defense. So just a real quick reminder, and I'd like to refresh you with the orientation of the project. Actually, if we can go to the next slide first, I should have done it the other way around. Oh. There we go, technology. All right. So, basic orientation, we have really four features of this project. The first is Cut 3, which is the westernmost limit of the project. Cut 5 will be dredging here in the middle. The turning basin here right by US 19. And the spoil site, or the dredge material disposal area, management area, rather, here off of LNR Road. So those are the main locations of our project. As a brief zoom-in area of the disposal area where it's going to be located, where the contractor will be staging some of their equipment in their offices. And then in the red here is the basic route of the discharge pipe, or rather, the pipe that's going to be feeding material from the, from the river to the base, to the disposal site, or rather, the spoil site. Back to overview. So I'm sure the question on y'all, a lot of y'all's minds is, you know, what's the schedule? How are we looking to do this project? So in brief overview, we are looking to, the contractor is looking to mobilizing at the end of September. They should start construction of the, of the spoil site early, sorry, at the end of September is when they should start beginning construction of this, this spoil site. And that should last till about early February. You'll see them installing the pipe right around the middle to end of December is roughly when they'll be installing that pipeline. Once that's complete, they'll move on to Cut 3 being the westernmost cut of the, cut of the, of the channel. That should start around the middle of February. From there, they'll move on to Cut 5, which would be roughly the end of February, February to sometime in early March. And then they'll move into, begin dredging the turning basin in early April, lasting to early May. And from then, they'll start working to do their final surveys and demobbing off the site sometime around the end of June. A couple of things to expect, so when they'll be dredging, actively dredging these cuts, we may see some impacts to commercial vessel travel. But the contractor will be issuing notice navigation before they start mobilizing out there, before they start moving work, so that those boat owners for, for some of the larger boats will know to contract, to contact the Coast Guard. And they'll know when they'll be out there dredging and they'll make arrangements for being able to get out of their way or move around while they're actively dredging. We shouldn't see any impacts to some of the smaller craft, recreational craft shouldn't have any issue going around, but potentially some of those larger commercial vessels. And then, of course, when we are constructing the pipeline itself, there'll be traffic markings for vehicle, vehicle movement. There'll be potentially, so potentially some just routine closure, not closures of roads, but traffic reroutings, flaggers to ensure traffic can still get around on that road. So that's the project in a nutshell, subject to your questions, gentlemen.
Thank you. Mr. Wren, I want to thank you for the update and I'm glad that we had the opportunity to meet you in person. As you know, this project is very, very important to our culture and to our local economy. Our government, of all levels, are very, very interested in supporting of this project from the city, us, the county, the state, and the federal government. I had the opportunity to talk to Congressman Billy Racus a couple of days ago, as I discussed with you earlier, in regards to funding for the, for the outcuts. And he's sure me that he's going to continue working with the general in charge of the Army Corps of Engineers in Washington to, you know, to come up with funding with that. And I also like to welcome Ms. Mayor that is over here representing Congressman Billy Racus. Thank you for being here tonight. I got a couple of questions to ask you. The dredging of the turning basin, we have two parts. We have the federal portion of it and we also have the city portion of it. The same contractor is going to do both of those parts. Are they going to be done, be doing those at the same time?
They only have, I understand, they only have one physical dredging barge out on the site, so they can't dredge both at the exact same time. But the idea is that they would dredge, we're looking at them dredging, potentially dredging y'all's part of it first and then doing the federal side of it right after, both around the time of April, May timeframe, or end of March, April, May timeframe. But there'll only be one dredger out there working at a time.
Okay. Thank you. Phase two is the outcuts. And of course, provided that we find funding for it, correct?
Correct, sir. Yeah.
If everything goes okay, when you think you're going to start doing the outcuts? Because if we don't complete the whole thing, the whole project, it won't be useful. When do you think that will be the time to do that?
Yes, sir. So we've continued to express our capability to the administration. That is, we told them, hey, we can do this work and here's how much it would cost. And then once that funding, should that funding be made available by Congress, we can then start looking into it. But it did not make the FY '22 President's Budget. So we will continue to express that capability in the next President's Budget.
When's the next, when's the next budget?
That'll be the fiscal year '23 is the next opportunity for us to express our capability.
I mean, October 1st?
I'm sorry, sir?
That'll be two years from now.
That would be, I have to double-check the exact timing of when, when that is, that would occur, but it would occur next, next fiscal year.
Okay. Guess we have to work with Congressman Billy Racus on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any commission questions, comments? Commissioner Vaticios?
Of course I have comments here. Thank you, Mr. Wren. And I'm glad we're finally getting started, at least on the inner cuts and
Wow.
And really going to be excited when we get to those outer cuts as well. The submerged line and I know some potential interference with some of our larger draft vessels. Is that, it's going to be submerged or floating?
It'll be primarily submerged. It's not quite on this map, but wish I was on. It's a little south there here. So where the, the pipeline goes across the main part of the river, that will be submerged. Actually, Bob's going to try to pull it up here. Here we go, if we can zoom in potentially. On this map, you see these red pin and there's these two yellow pins. This section of the pipeline or everything from the, whoop, that's right? We'll flip it around here.
It'll, it'll actually be on the south side as it runs from the mouth of the river back towards, and then it's going to cross.
Correct. So the barge where they'll be loading material into the pumps to send it across will be on the south side of the river. And it'll be submerged pipeline across the river to the north side of it. And once it meets the shore, it'll be placed upland and behind these boats, so it won't interfere with the boat traffic. But this section will be submerged and then from here north will be above grade.
There's, I'm sure you all thought through that, but is, there isn't any way of locating that barge on the north side? The, the offloading location for that barge, so we don't have to obscure the river for the deeper draft boats?
I can certainly ask, sir. I don't know, but I'll check.
That's fair enough to do that at this point?
Yes, sir. They've not mobilized yet.
We've got several boats that are, at least, I don't want to say for sure, but they do have to go out at high tide, so we're looking at a seven, eight-foot draft on that. I know the contractor likes to try and keep the, the line as close to the bottom as they can, but we've had issues in the past with the last dredging 25 years ago with contact by the boats with these lines and but I do appreciate that the line doesn't extend further out in the river. That's a little different than, last time it actually extended, it was a suction dredge that operated, so. The, the disposal line from, once it makes landfall to the disposal pond, it looks like, I know there's a culvert at that location, but the last time it was over the road. Will that be the case as well? Somewhat of a line in the road with two ramps, dirt ramps on either side to, to kind of allow vehicle traffic to continue?
Yes, sir. So when we spoke with the contractor this morning, I understand there'll be four crossings of this pipe across both Anclod River, I believe it is, or Anclod Road and LNR. There was, yeah, so we'll have a crossings, it's hard to see, but in this circle, two at that circle. It's kind of hard to see on here. There we go. Yeah, one up here, there'll be one further down here, I believe, and then here and here. Originally, I think the discussion was to do, to was to cut and bury their line through the road or on the road. We've had some discussions about going horizontal drilling underneath the road, so we're still talking to that part.
Still figuring that one out.
No pipes on the road.
Not on the road? Well, that's good, because I mean, there's heavy trucks and everything, but, but anyway. And the only time we had a cut last, it wasn't a cut, it was actually on the road, but everything ran on the, on the east side of Anclod Road. There wasn't the RO plant or anything like that, so I appreciate y'all looking at the logistics of that as well. So you'll start with the outer, it'll load up the barge, and you gave us the timeline for, once you get into the, up to the time you got into the, into the turning basin. Do you have any kind of a schedule? I know the contract's, I think, one year.
Correct.
Okay. So the contractor would have up to one year to finish their work. So we could potentially go, I don't think that that's what the contractor would want, but they could potentially go to February of 2023, is that correct?
To perform what work? I'm sorry, sir.
Well, no, I'm sorry. We're, we're looking at now September of 2021, so they could go potentially out to September 2022 before the contract.
Sorry, we issued notice to proceed on July 1st of this year, just.
So that's when the clock started?
That's when the clock, so July 1st of '22 would be, would be the end of their period performance.
Is there any firmer schedule than that, as far as when an expected completion would be?
We're still working on it. We have their initial schedule. We still have to review it, do our quality assurance controls, checks on it. But, yeah, they're looking at end of June, maybe last week in June or so, to finish and be demobilized.
Okay. And I'm just going to ask this, and it would be either Mr. Robertson or yourself, and if it's Mr. Robertson, he can just shake his head. Are we going to hear about the extended turning basin tonight and, and potentially a timetable for that as well?
I'll answer that with a quick update for you. I am working directly with the contractor negotiating that. I'm expecting their proposal by the end of this week. So I'm going to run it through procurement and then we'll come talk to the board about it.
We don't have any numbers yet or like that?
Not yet. But it's in the works.
And as far as restoring the site to its original condition, I know we've kind of bounced back and forth. Originally, we were going to use material that was going to be excavated to create the berms for the disposal pond. Then we would use part material that was excavated, then some additional material that was going to be brought onto the site. And then, and then it now is going to be the city's responsibility to, to restore that site. Is that correct? No longer the contractors.
That's right.
So as far as your understanding goes, if we go towards the, into fiscal year 2022, you know, this timeframe that we talked about as far as issuing the contract, do you have any kind of gut feel of when we would be finished up with restoring that site as well?
Yeah. My best estimate is, is probably realistically 60 to 90 a days. I'd like it to be faster. If the contractor is faster, I know they have a lot of float built into the schedule that they've told you. You know, we, we may be able to start that earlier. I will just say, since I'm on the subject, we do have the state funding that was for the lease, but it also helps cover part of, or most of, the restoration cost. Some of it will have to come out of our pockets, for sure. And I'm probably going to have to talk to, now that we have this schedule with Mr. Stammas about potentially extending the lease until we can finish the restoration. Obviously, he was, he's going to want us to put that back. And he and I have had a lot of conversations about that, so we know that's going to happen.
The game plan is still to take the material to the landfill?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. When are we going to hear back from the, the extended turning basin, I should say?
Well, let me get a chance to see the numbers, if I need to have some more back and forth with the contractor.
But it'll be another contract, is that right for that one?
Yes, it'll be a contract.
And a contract for restoring the site as well?
Well, we're going to try to do that in-house. If we can't do that, then we will come to you with another contract for that.
I thought the DEP permit required EPA trucks, closed trucks.
I believe so. I'll have to verify that.
Yeah, double-check on that.
I will double-check that.
I've read through and I was kind of, it basically, they can't leak as you're driving down the road, so. That's pretty hefty requirement. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. And maybe I misheard, I apologize if I did, but could you expand on the notices that are getting sent out?
Oh, the notices to navigation?
Yes.
That would be the contractor coordinating and working through the Coast Guard to publish a public flyer, public information on, hey, we're going to be at this part of the river, we're going to be dredging at this time. Here's our radio frequencies to contact us, so that the larger craft vessels know who to reach and who to coordinate, to make sure they can, either contractor moves aside or they can find their way past.
Okay. And where does that get posted? That's just going to be notices sent out to, I guess I'm just asking, whose responsibility is it to, to make sure that people know about that?
The, as I understand, Bob, the contractor will publish that to the Coast Guard. And then just through any normal notice of navigation, public can contact the Coast Guard, look on there to see what those impacts are.
We'll also ask the contractor to send those notices through us. And we'll use whatever means we have via the city, our website, Facebook, to put those notices out as well. Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
And I'll coordinate with Bob once time comes to get that information passed along to the city. One other thing I wanted to mention, working hours. So the contractor's plan is to work only during daylight hours, so they won't be working at night, and only Monday through Saturday, so no work on Sunday.
Okay.
See that arise.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wren. We're going to go to public comments. And we'll be back. Are there any public comments on this item? Just come forward. State your name and your address for the record, please.
George Zoots, 46 West Lemon Street, Tarpon Springs. Just for tonight's, the plan and I own Anclod Owl's Marina, which this is impacting. So we talked, I guess I would deal directly with the contractor on the impacts it has to the marina and disturb. I think the last time, goes to when you were overseeing the dredge, they actually rented a slip and ran it through to get to the culvert. So if that's the contractor's decision, or is that something that the Corps is involved in?
We'll come back to that.
Might have less environmental impact on it if they did it another way, but again, I'm just looking at it for the first time tonight.
That is, may I answer that question?
No.
Okay.
Let's get all the comments and then we'll come back to that, please. We'll get back to the, we're going to answer that in a minute. Are there any other public comments?
Good evening, all. Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. I just want to thank you all. This has been a long time coming. It's a pleasure to hear that we're moving ahead with this. I am a boater and I know how much this affects the larger boats, so I just want to thank all of you. I know it's I know it's been a lot of work, and I think that we're getting somewhere. And I'd love to hear that we get the outer, the outer inlet under Happens, Mayor.
In a something though?
I know. So what I would like to see is that we get that outer boundary done as well because as much as it helps us on the inside, without having it on the outside, the boats can't come in anyway. So, but I'm pleased to hear this because it is a mess. I see it on my GPS when I'm going through, so, and depth finder. So thank you. Thank you all. And thank you for doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item? Here none. Mr. Robinson, would you please answer the question to George?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So the question was, is there some ability to, for the owner to provide some input on this pipeline route? And there certainly is. This is up to the contractor to determine where and how this pipeline connects to the Anclot Road pipe. So he definitely has some flexibility to work with the owner, and the contractor will do that. I've already spoken with the contractor about doing, without doing this kind of thing. We didn't speak about this specific issue, but this is, this is how this typically works.
County Road.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ray, thank you again. We're looking forward to see you again with, to give us a progress report.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. The public comments, I would like to remind to everyone that based on the city rules and procedures, all public comments must be directed only to the chair of the meeting in a professional manner with respect, without a personal attacks. And I want to thank you for your cooperation. If you have any comments, if you please come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record. You'll be given four minutes.
Good evening. Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive, Tarpon Springs. I have a letter I need to read, and it has nothing to do with me. What's beeping here?
I don't know what that is.
Okay, we went high tech. This is from Trish Hickey, and it says, Dear Mrs. Constantine, the city's working with a contractor to correct the flooding concern on your property. The contractor has concluded that the installation of a concrete curb along the south property line would divert the water flow and eliminate any flooding to your property, and the removal of the section of driveway that encroached it. If this curb installation, as he suggests and would install, does not correct the flooding issue, he would be required to hire a professional engineer to provide a detailed drawing to rectify the water flow. At this time, the city's requesting the approval of a contractor and owner to flood the property using a city water truck and view the water flow. This will damage, this will not damage any structures or property. It does not simulate an actual rain event due to the fact we cannot simulate water runoff from the structures. But it'll be a good indicator of what will occur on the property. City staff will be on site during the testing. City staff will keep me informed of any developments as they occur. Please do not hesitate to, you know, to contact me if you have any additional questions. Best regards, Mayor Chris Alahuzis. I commend you, Mayor, for writing this. The issue I have is, it was written in 2016, and nothing was done. We can't have residents sitting in this city being flooded. I don't know what happened to this. I had a conversation with the city manager. The city manager said he would look into it. And that didn't end well. I shouldn't be up here talking about residents' issues like this. So I was told to pull the permits for this particular property. So I did. And the permit is for 2001 for concrete, and I'm reading it exactly as it's written. But we don't have any paperwork on it, so we don't know where it was, what was included in the permit. And Kevin and Beth are working on the problem. I commend Beth. She is doing an amazing job. She took over for police, police gassing. And I'm telling you, I see this woman all over town. She's doing a great job. Kevin is working on this also. We can't drop the ball. The woman's had this happening to her for over 10 years. Why are we punishing her? I took it upon myself to put my truck there, and I went to film it during a storm. I would be screaming if this was my property. It's just flowing right off this gentleman's property that's next to her and just drowning her out with a curb that would cost a couple of dollars and a little bit of a fixing. She would be happy camper. I don't understand why this has gone on so many years. I would love to come up here and compliment the work that we do. But how do I do that when I get complaints like this? I saw it with my own eyes. So I need everybody, all the city commissioners, to ask that Mark follows up on this and make sure that everybody follows suit. There is no permit. This was done on a Sunday, or it was done in the dark. It was done to actually, the way I see it as a retired contractor, it was done to flood this poor woman's house. Shouldn't be done. So I don't know what else to say. I know the city is looking into fixing this, but we got to make sure we stay on top of this. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. LaCuiser, would you please follow up on that?
It is ongoing now.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Landrum. I live at 45 West Martin Luther King Junior Drive here in Tarpon Springs. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for allowing us public comments. I am concerned about my community. I'm from the era that believes our elected fellow citizens will care as much as I do about my community and do the right thing. That has changed, and that's why I'm here in person tonight, to let you know that people like me with no agenda that cares deeply about our community and feels the need to show up and speak out against the Anclot Harbor development. I am one of 10,671 people that have signed the Save the Anclot 74 Acre Ecosystem, which according to the 2019 census that I found online, is almost half of the population of Tarpon Springs. When I learned the application for development along the, when I heard about it, along the Anclot River in January, my husband and I could not believe this. The river and the barrier islands are what drew us to Tarpon, as well as the charm of this town. We grew up in small towns in the heartland, and our Tarpon neighbors and the businesses that we patronize made us want to spend our golden years here. I'm concerned about the ecosystem that will be destroyed, rare and endangered animals and plants that all of you heard about from the Audubon Society and the Sierra Club at the special meeting that I attended recently, with the exception of Mr. Terrapani, who was absent. I think we should work together to purchase this land for public use rather than profit off of its destruction. I am concerned about the pollution during construction and then after development that will flow down our beautiful river, the one that we're getting ready to dredge here, into the Gulf, affecting wildlife, people, and businesses. I am concerned about the safety of the people that would end up living in the Anclot Harbor. More than once, I've sat in my car on US 19 for more than two hours and stopped traffic, completely stopped, and many times for very long periods. I wonder what would happen if there's a medical emergency in the Anclot Harbor during rush hour traffic or a fire? I don't see how that would end good. I'm here this evening to implore each of you to deny the permits for Anclot Harbor and vote as your constituents are imploring you to vote. Let us come together and purchase this wild area for the wildlife, for the people, and our community, and turn it into a public treasure and a legacy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Annie Dabs. I reside at 803 South District Avenue, Tarpon Springs. I want to weight my words carefully as I proceed. How far we have come for Black history. I'm going to refer to Psalms 90, verses 1 through 3 and 14 through 17. Lord, Thou hast been our dwelling place in all generations. Before the mountains was brought forth, or even Thou hast formed the earth and the world. Even from everlasting to everlasting, Thou art God. Thou turnest men to destruction and say, "Return, ye children of men." O satisfy us early with Thy mercy, that we may rejoice and be glad in all our days. Make us glad according to the days wherein Thou hast afflicted us and the years where we have seen evil, and I will add injustice. Let the work appear unto Thy servant, and Thy glory unto Thy children. And let the beauty of our Lord, our God, be upon us, and establish the work of our hands upon us. Yea, the work of our hand established Thou it. This psalms can be described as a congregation of prayer. It is one of the most precious gems in the altar. This is a poem about human life. This psalm endured from generation to generation. And again, I'll weight my words carefully when I say, there were those back then that thought Black people could not be educated. And today, unfortunately, there are still those that think whites cannot be educated. Our children needs all the extracurricular activities that can be made available. It not only will inspire them, but it will also motivate them to learn. Many times, the children of slave owners was hid and taught. But this is a different period of time. We should be open and glad to help our children with any important tools that they need to succeed in life. We can help them. Where there is a will, I do believe there is a way. When I went to school, I got books, pages torn out, the rest had crayon and pencil marked all over. But it did not stop me from spending 31 years in public education with Pinellas County Schools. I was motivated. In spite of everything, I kept on learning. And our children will keep on learning. When you stand up for God, He will stand by you, and nothing will knock you over.
Mrs. Dabs, your time has expired. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next speaker, please.
Funny Guti School, Yaz, 595 Peninsula Avenue. Good evening, Mayor. I want to start off with the rising numbers in COVID. It is something to consider Zoom here in the near future. If you want to save time to have one minute, someone talk for one minute on Zoom, that will shorten your time. But as the numbers rise, people will be scared to come to these public meetings. I mean, I'll be here, but some people won't want to come. I would like to ask Ms. Robin Sanger to come up here and give her stance on Anclot Harbors. It's been a couple of meetings where we've talked about it. And her being very vocal on the West Claustabin Preserve, I believe she should come up here and not speak as a candidate for office, but speak as an everyday Tarponite about her thoughts about Anclot Harbors before it starts progressing to wherever it goes. The MLK road closures, there's a few roads down that area that are closed. I'd like to have an update on when they will be opened up. Believe either schools started this week in some counties, or we're going to be starting really soon. And the bus routes go around the MLK to come up, and they're going to come through MLK, and they're going to have to reroute themselves. So I'm hoping that road can open up relatively soon. And the progress on phase two of the Mayor's Boulevard extension, after the lawsuits been, come to light. People are wondering about phase two, when it's going to start, what the concept's going to look like. The road's going to be widened out, so I think it's important that we discuss it. And regarding slinging mud during the election and the campaign, there's a reason why we left certain stuff at certain parts in history to leave it in the past. And I would suggest that to anybody that we not try to bring up anybody's past, and we focus on issues in Tarpon Springs that are important to the Tarponites and for a better Tarpon Springs. And I've also been told that we're a one-stop destination. And I don't believe that because, you know, you're out in Greece. One night you go to one restaurant down at the, down at the Platia, the working waterfront. The next night you go out to another restaurant. I think Tarpon Springs would be a good area to have a small boutique hotel, anywhere between 10 to 30 rooms. I know we can do it. And the same people who oppose having a boutique hotel are the same ones who encourage Airbnbs in historical areas and buy your everyday houses where you live in your single-family zoning home. So I think we can do that. And it also will stop having Airbnbs throughout all of Tarpon Springs and more focused around the CRA or the downtown area. And I found this interesting document. It's to Ken Burke, and it's from Melissa Dondero, the Inspector General, Chief Audit Executive Division of Inspector General. And the subject is the review of Oasis Acres Affordable Housing Development. And some of the stuff in here are potential conflict of interest between the developer and the county staff. Now, I wonder who the county staff was? I wonder where they're at now? I wonder how you all feel about conflicts of interest between developers and staff members? And then maybe those people coming back into our city after other issues that we've had with planning around here before. So as this stuff starts unfolding, you'll see it as a web. There is a network, and it's our job as citizens to expose it. That way, we can have a better government and a better Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. Anita Protas, 901 Bay Shore Drive. Every year, and when I was mayor, we took care of this. Maybe the police chief can answer it, Mayor. Have we talked to the school board about buses coming over the bridge at the yacht club? We know it's going to have to have a lot of work done on it. And the school buses are heavy. And the school buses are heavy. And I've noticed that last year, until I called down to the school board, they were using that bridge, and I just don't feel that it's safe for the school buses. So I don't know if they've contacted the city, if the city has talked to them about rerouting the school buses again, like they finally did to go down Mears and Martin Luther King. I think that's something very important to start talking to them about, because school does start tomorrow. And those school buses going over that bridge is a little scary, because when you go to approach the bridge, you can see the wires holding it up. They haven't put anything on them. They haven't done any more work on them. And it's just a cautionary for the safety of the children going to school. The, I'm going to bring up the one-stop destination. And I think Commissioner Vaticiotis can attest to this when he was city manager. And I think, Mayor, you can attest to it, too. We invited many, many hotels to come here to talk about a hotel down by the docks. And that's where that saying came from. Because they would have to get in their cars to go to the beaches and come back down to the sponge docks. And that's where it originated from. It wasn't the city. Every hotel told us point-blank that it would be a one-stop destination, and that's why we didn't get a big hotel back then. And the mayor has been working very vigorously about getting one here. But they again say "one-stop destination," and I explain that to you. So don't go out and say we don't know what we're doing or infer it, because we do. And I wanted to clear that up, so people who hear it watching tonight think that we weren't trying. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any other public comments? I hear none. We are now going to consult agenda. Item number one is review file number 210081CAM, Routine Maintenance and Repairs for Maintaining the Highway Lightning System, Florida Department of Transportation, Contract Number E2Z74-RO. Number two is to authorize execution of the annual DEA Test Force Agreement. Number three is to authorize execution of crime scene and fingerprinting agreement with Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. Are there any items that you'd like to pull? I hear none. We're going to go to public comments on the items one, two, and three. Do we have any public comments on these items? I hear none. The chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any commission comments? Here none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alhazas.
Yes, thank you. Item number four on the agenda is to approve a new evaluation forms for charter officials. I'd like to ask our internal auditor to present this item.
You mean Ms. Niffen? Ms. Niffen will be presenting this item.
Ms. Niffen? Sniff is going to do it, okay.
Honorable Mayor, Board of Commissioners, good evening. Please excuse the sunglasses. I've had an eye issue that I'm recovering from, and it's very light-sensitive, so I hope you'll understand. I hope I can read what I'm looking at as well. I'm here tonight to ask that you approve the charter official evaluations that are included in your package. That would be for city attorney, city clerk and collector, city manager, and internal auditor. In an attempt to create some uniformity to the evaluation process for the charter officials, city staff was asked to research and develop documents that were standardized in format and form, as well as focused on position-specific functions and categories. We gathered samples from other surrounding municipalities. We compared them and contrasted them and looked at them. And the resultant documents are the ones that are attached to this memorandum tonight.
Okay? Thank you. As you said that months ago, we asked the city manager to develop this evaluation forum for the charter officials and to be specific to their functions and responsibilities. Based on the charter, these evaluations must be completed annually in August. If we approve this forum, we have twenty days to complete it. I think the staff who are managing employees, such as the city manager and city clerk, that should have another category on leadership, if we can include that in there. Vice Mayor, do you have a comment on that?
I've got no further comments, Mayor. I'm fine with supporting that.
Okay. You don't think the category of leadership is necessary?
No, I'm fine with supporting the category of leadership.
Okay, thanks. Do we have any other comments? No?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Niffen.
Where's your button?
Pardon me? Oh, your button. Yes. The mayor will explain that at some point. I wanted to thank Ms. Niffen and the hard work. I know when we got started on this last year, it's just, everything was different. We didn't have really anything, as far as I could see, for the city attorney. We have something now. The city clerk had something completely different from the city manager. So I very much appreciate this uniformity, and I could certainly work with what you've provided. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go to public comments on this item. Do you have any public comments on this item? Please come forward.
Panayotis School, Yazs, 595 Peninsula Avenue. I feel obligated to speak on this issue. This is one of the many concerns I originally had brought up when I first started coming to the meetings. And I love how we have the number system with unsatisfactory going up to outstanding. But the comments portion, I'm looking at all of them. And there's a lot of optional under the different categories. And I think it should be mandatory that you leave three to five sentences under each category. You got to give charter officials, department heads, whoever actually wants to look at this stuff, a good idea of what you're commenting on and giving your, you know, your rubric score. So it doesn't lead, if you guys just do optional, most of you aren't going to leave any comments, and you're not going to help the city of Tarpin Springs. You're not going to help future Tarponites running for office. That was no different from the department head annual reviews. I mean, it was just a couple of checks. The comments, there was no comments at all. So it's a disservice to us that we're not making it mandatory for people to have to write comments. And there should be at least, you know, one area to improve comment under each category. Because we all have areas that we need to improve in every category, all of us, all the time. So it doesn't necessarily put you in a bad spot, put the person who's being reviewed in a bad spot. But it does help create a track record. And a mandatory comment should be given as opposed to optional comments under these categories. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Here none. The chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do you like to include the category of leadership on the people, the managing people?
Yes.
You want to include that?
That's what you suggested we need to do that. I agree with you, as leadership is very important. And I would hope that Mrs. Niffen could work that in with a form for all of them. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Everybody's okay with that?
Sure.
Roll call, please.
I've got another comment, Mayor, if I can make real quick. There is an individual who made a comment tonight in public comments about the optional comment. I do think it's important that there's some comments written on this. I think it was a good point that was brought up. In the years past, I'm one to fill up a page with comments, so I have no problem writing it out. But more than just a score of one through seven or five, I don't remember which one it is now. I do think it's important, though, for future commissions to have some comments, regardless who's in the position. And I do, I mean, being in the business world, it's nice to know that if I get a three, five, or a four, where I stand with my bosses. So, I mean, I would like to see that changed as well. Somewhere, if it's at least one comment per category, I think would be important of some sort, instead of optional. Is there any, any interest in that from the rest of the board?
Honestly, I don't have a problem with that, because I'm doing it anyway.
I know.
I believe the evaluation, and I've been a manager for many years, evaluation is actually an agreement, an understanding between a manager, a supervisor, and the employee. It's very important, too, because it's not just to write the evaluation, just give it to them, you put it on the record, but it's actually to communicate with the person thinks that you want to, you know, let them know the things that it does very well, and things that need to be improved. It should be a communication between the employee and the employer.
One hundred percent, yeah.
Do you have a comment?
I used the button.
Oh, there's a button.
Okay. The comments, for me, are never optional. I always leave comments. And, I mean, whatever we would want to do with that is fine. It's not going to change the way I evaluate. And like I said, I think the narrative is very important. I'm not sure just check marks really mean anything to anybody unless you really explain those, because one check mark means something to something else, and you really don't understand until you actually explain what that check mark is for. So, and that's done in the narrative. So whatever this commission wants to do in that regard is fine with me. But I just wanted to go on the record and simply say I never leave comments blank. Thank you.
Commission Donovan?
Yeah, I agree to make the comments mandatory. I don't want to get into, you know, a certain amount of sentences or something like that. Just take out the optional. In the past, I mean, I've never really cared too much about the score. It's too subjective. I've always had two sections, one, areas to improve, two, strengths to build on. And I'm a big fan of that. I think it's a well-rounded eval. And, I mean, I think the sheet encourages that. I would just take out the optional for comments.
The, if I may offer one more comment. If we're really want to do this, I think we need to strengthen that by, at some point in time, not anytime soon, but including that specific provision in our rules of procedure. I know it's in the charter, but the charter doesn't delineate this. But that's what the rules of procedure are for, is to explain these things a little further, so.
Yeah, we can include that in there, yeah. We can include that in there, I'm sure. City Manager Licorice.
My button works.
I know it.
Just a clarification on the leadership. Are you entrusting Ms. Niffen to do a category for this evaluation here? Obviously, will be the end of August before we come be able to bring it back. Are you entrusting her to do that and set those categories for leadership? And then, second, I've heard two, myself and the clerk, for leadership, since we have people. And I've heard all four adding the auditor and city attorney to leadership. I just need a clarification of those two things on the leadership issue that's being added.
Mr. Licorice, what I suggested to the board was there's actually two positions, yourself and the city clerk, that are actually managing people. And it's very important to have that category in there. Honestly, even if we do not modify the form that we use, that's an item that I'm going to include anyway, on my part. So even if we don't do it now, I think when we modify that, it should be included.
Mayor, if I could, if I could speak, Mayor?
If you do, quick, because at 7:30, we're going to.
So I think Commissioner Vaticiotis made the motion, and then we had a second on the board. So we want to be clear to the city manager on what we need to come back to us. Are we okay just putting the city manager and the city clerk down for the leadership position then? Okay. I just want to make sure we're in agreement with the motion and that it's going to come back to us the right way.
But is okay with that?
I, I'll amend my motion to, as described. We'll eliminate the optional wording and also provide some direction at the next update for our rules of procedure to include that those comments are mandatory. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Just, excuse me, Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
You still haven't answered the, do you want a category created for leadership for this one that you're going to be receiving to do in the next three weeks? Or do you want to just include that in what's presently made?
Mayor, if I may clarify that, yes. Go ahead and add it for this time around, and if there's any issues, we can, we can update that next time.
Okay.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alhazas.
Yes, thank you. And based on the rules and procedures, at 7:30, the public hearing portion of the meeting must start. So we're going to go to item number 13, which is the application 2122, that has been deferred. And item number 14, the application 2134 has been deferred. So the next item is 15, it's a resolution 2021-42, application 2168, conditional use. For Mr. Mavromatis, Spruce Street, this is quasi-traditional process. And the city attorney will read and explain the judicial process.
I'll read the resolution first. Resolution number 2021-42, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, approving application number 21-68, requesting a conditional use permit to allow construction of two single-family residences, one on each of lots nine and 10, Riverview subdivision, located on the south side of East Spruce Street, between North Pinellas Avenue and North Savert Avenue, in the T4C District of the Special Area Plan, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of resolution 2021-42 by title only. This is a quasi-traditional proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-traditional rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-traditional hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-traditional proceeding, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria in the Code of Ordances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordenses, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordenses, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. At this time, I'd ask anyone that is going to speak at this quasi-traditional proceeding to stand up, raise your right hand, and be sworn under oath. Is the applicant here? Sir, are you going to speak? Okay. Okay, I hear you. You swear that the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay. Before we move on, then, I need to ask the commission, are there, are any of the commissioners want to disclose any expiratory communications or conflicts of interest? Not seeing any hands raised, so we can go directly to staff presentation. Ms. Vincent, would you like to begin?
Thank you. Again, this is conditional use application 21-68. This is a conditional use for two single-family homes in the T4C transect code. This is our last set of these. You should see, if you recall, we have been processing an amendment to the SMART code to remove the conditional use requirement for single-family detached residential. But these were two that were in process, and we're not quite over the finish line with our second readings that will be in a couple of weeks. So we are proceeding forward with this. One, the property is located here on East Spruce Street. It is, consists of two lots that are under common ownership. Individually, they do meet the requirements for lot size and all the dimensional requirements. Here's a survey that just shows the two lots as they are currently platted. The proposed floor plan, I do want to point out, working with the applicant, they've, are using a side-load garage here with a, so the front of the garage that faces the street will actually be detailed to look like, you know, a residential structure rather than a garage structure. So this is a nice frontage that really is in compliance with the intent of the code. Under our conditional use review criteria, staff does find it is consistent with all of these review criteria. This is an infill development, and it does provide for efficient orderly development, no impacts on public. no impacts on public facilities or the ability of the city to serve. Staff recommendation is to approve the resolution twenty-twenty-one dash forty-two, granting conditional use approval for construction of two single-family detached dwellings in the T-four-C transect district, subject to one condition, that the conditional use will expire within one year if the building permit is not issued for the property. Planning and zoning board did review this on, excuse me, July the nineteenth, and recommended approval by unanimous vote, and there was no public comment. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Did you want to tender your report into evidence, Renee?
Yes, thank you, and the, and the presentation.
All right. Any questions from the commission? Seeing none?
No.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant wish to step forward and make a presentation? Sir? If you could come to the microphone so we can hear you.
I can stop.
Thank you, sir. Could you state your name, please? You were sworn under oath. And, tell us what your, any presentation that you wanted to make?
No presentation. My name is Nick Mavramatis.
Okay. Does, does the commission have any questions from the property owner, the applicant? I'm seeing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any members of the public wish to step forward to make any type of comment or presentation? Ms. Protos?
Anita Protos from Iowa on Bay Shore Drive. Everything Mr. Malamatis has done in this community has been first-class. He has followed all the rules and regulations of our community, our building department. This will be bringing in taxes to this city, water and sewer money, penny for Pinellas. It'll be a lifeline to the city. He has poured a lot of money into our community, and everything has been excellent. I urge you to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Seeing none. Renee, did you want to give any type of summary?
No.
No? Mr. Mavramatis, any summary then? No, sir? Okay, thank you. Mayor, it's back to the commission for consideration of the application.
Thank you. The chair will detain the motion on this item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any commission comments on this item?
None.
Here, none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuesas?
Yes, thank you. And now, we will continue with the meeting. What we're left of, which is item number five, is to authorize execution of the agreement with Pinellas County for right-of-way transfers. That was referred from July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one regulation. Mr. Licorice, staff report?
Yes, Mr. Robertson, making presentation.
Good evening. Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. For this item, we're requesting board's approval of an interlocal agreement and an assignment of easement between the city and Pinellas County, through which the city would accept the transfer of three right-of-way segments from the county at no cost. These three segments are recommended for approval. All three of them have city infrastructure in them of some kind, including a water production well, water pipes, stormwater infrastructure, and fiber optic cables that serve the RO plant. So, there's a strategic advantage for the city for taking these over. I keep my comments brief, Mayor, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. We're going to go to public comments. Do we have any public comments on this item?
I'm here now.
Are there any, excuse me, I need a motion?
Second.
Are there any commission comments? I hear none. Bob, the only thing I want to say is, it's actually a very good deal for us that we're going to get land, the right-of-ways with no cost to the City of Tarpon Springs to be able to, to use for our utilities. I think it's a great deal. I'd like to send a thank you letter to the county for giving us that property. If you please make a note of that one.
Will do.
Thank you. Any other commission comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuesas?
Yes, thank you. Number six is the next item on the agenda. This is the RFP number twenty-one zero one, twenty-nine P A E M, solid waste and recycle material collection services. Mr. Licorice, staff report?
Tom Function, he'll start off with this item.
Good evening. Tom Function, Public Works Director. Of course, we're coming here in front to recommend the award for solid waste recyclable material collection services to Waste Pro of Florida for the period of October one, two thousand twenty-one, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, which is a five-year contract, in the estimated amount of four million ninety-nine thousand seven eighty-two dollars and twenty cents. The residential rate will have a slight increase, and I corrected that. I apologize on my memo. I thought it was one point four percent. We actually cleaned up that calculation. Thank you, Ron Herring. And it's actually six point nine percent increase, which works out to about a dollar fifteen a resident. But the overall percentage rate will be, I'm sorry, because commercial will be, rate will be slightly higher depending on the service, but overall percentage rate should fall within about the same amount, you know, four to five percent at the most increase in those costs. The background on this is a person's contract is to provide solid waste, recyclable material collection service for all the residential customers for the city-owned facilities and sponsored events, as well as providing solid waste collection service for all commercial customers within the city limits or water and service, uh, service areas. First year, collection rates are constant with the current rates. On October twenty-first, twenty-second, on that date thereafter, the term of the contract shall be entitled to an annual collection rate adjustment, and that's based on the CPI, Community Price Index over here. I do have Tracy Meehan, who's the Municipal Marketing Manager from Waste Pro here tonight. I also have Derek Hunt. He's at Division Manager. So, if there's any questions regarding what's in their proposal, I'd be happy to come up and answer that. I appreciate I've had an opportunity to talk to a lot of people today, communication either emails or, and one of the most consistent questions I've had is regarding roll-offs. I know that the commission, we've had discussions, I know a lot of had discussions, other people. So, before we get into the, any type of questions for Waste Pro, I'd like to just touch base on why there's roll-offs in, in the RFP. And I was, I got probably a dozen questions on this today, so bear with me over here. I want to know why, uh, the subject is that they've been discussing residents and developers being forced to use waste manager roll-offs. Well, of course, this would be a new contract. These roll-offs can take up a week to be delivered. I've heard that, rates and all, but the, the delivery rates, the delivery as far as dumpster goes through waste management is actually only, from my understanding, it's just been over the last year, and that seems to be pretty consistent with both, most commercial dumpster deliveries. Case night over there is the fact that why do we have these roll-offs in here? We started this doing, I guess, back in two, nineteen ninety-six, I think, when it first went into the, into the RFP. And I'll touch on one of the reasons why, when I discovered why it's in there, right? First thing all is, any dumpster under ten yards, or contractor-owned, or a hundred percent recyclable, does not fall under this contract. So, if you, if you're a contractor itself and you want to use your own container service, they're not required to use Waste Pro. You're a small contractor and you have those tag-alongs less than ten yards, again, this does not fall underneath it. And of course, if you're, the other one was, uh, ten yards contractor owned or a hundred percent recyclable like concrete. You have concrete, of course, any type of a hundred percent recyclable materials does not fall under those requirements. Second, excuse me, I'll go through here. Contract value. Should you pull the, require us to pull the dumpsters, the roll-offs, I should say, out of the contract, for one thing, we'd have to go back out to RFP. We just can't pull it out of the contract. Number two, we reduce the value, which would be offset with higher service fees for both commercial and residential. So, some additional costs will probably end up going back down to the, to the residents and the commercial businesses. The other was that control. One of the things we have with a service like this, if you happen to have a contractor out there utilizing one of these containers, and one leaks, spillage, poor conditioning containers over here, the city knows where to go to, to, if we have control of the containers. If you have a spillage, oil leaks, that happens sometimes, happened before in the past, containers are not properly taken care of, spillage with, with outside contractors. We have no control of covering that, controlling that. In this case, we can. We go right to the contractor that handles it. The other very important point is final destination. There's no guarantee from another contractor that they're going to take material here and bring it to a licensed or approved facility. Under this contract, we were guaranteed that we'll go to a licensed and approved facility. And of course, then, if we can, is internal needs. Sometimes the city has events, whether it's a small demolition job, construction job, cleaned out a warehouse here a couple of years ago, special events, those containers are given to the city at no cost. So, there are some cost savings involved in that. Of course, the board can make that decision, but that, of course, that's up to you guys. If you, if you decide to go back out, one of the things you've got to think about, if you don't mind, if you pull it all over here and you have to go back out to bid, you may get the opportunity where other companies, the companies that bid are other companies, will know exactly what these prices were. We lose a competitive edge on that. And many companies that, that see it may not even bother bidding on it either. So, you may have no bids on this. That's very much a possibility. The other question I had was as far as fees for roll-offs. The only fee we have on a roll-off is a twenty percent admission admin fee, which covers the cost of the city. And of course, there's been also code enforcement complaints regarding roll-off dumpsters and those, that would have to be actually answered by code enforcement if they have those questions. But that's just something I thought was important that we heard. Of course, it's up, up to you. It's, I have, do I said, I do have Tracy, and I have Derek here answering questions related directly to the, the contract, and I can also answer questions if you have anything as far as how the evaluation went.
Mr. Function, I would like to hear from the contractors. She, tell us about the company and the services they're providing.
Hi, good evening. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you for allowing us to be here this evening and to bid on the city's services. So, as Tom mentioned, my name is Tracy Meehan, and I'm the Municipal Marketing Manager for Waste Pro's West Coast Region. And this is Derek Hunt. He's the Division Manager for the facility that we have here in Pinellas County. So, Waste Pro celebrated our twentieth year in business this January. We provide waste, all the waste services, collection needs, and recycling services. Locally here, in the market area, we also provide services to the City of Dunedin, recycling collections and processing, North Reddington Beach, and we recently transitioned the City of Seminole, Florida in December of two thousand twenty. So, just a little bit more about Waste Pro. We're headquartered in Longwood, Florida, so we're a Florida-based company. We operate in eleven states in the southeast area predominantly, and we provide services to three hundred different municipalities within those, within the, within our footprint. Do you have any other questions for us on Waste Pro?
We're going to go to public comments, and we'll come back to you after we have a discussion, if you don't mind.
Sure.
If you just stand by there for a minute.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Forward.
Mike Eisner, fifteen fifteen Riverside Drive. The only comment I have is, for some reason, I received the backup material for this at two thirty-nine today. So, there was some backup material, but then there were, the rest of the important backup material came at two thirty-nine. And I just have to say, how do you get this information so late to make a decision? I mean, you're leaving three and a half, four hours to make this, you know, an educated decision on a business matter. So, I, I just think this thing should come in and, you know, Thursday, Friday, so you have the weekend to do some research and figure things out, because otherwise, to give somebody four hours to come up, I don't know what you could talk about. I don't know what you can ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person, please.
Jackie Turner, seven ninety-two Chesapeake Drive. Kind of echoing Mr. Eisner's comment there. You're looking at a more than twenty million dollar, five-year contract that's going to begin in six weeks. And without the benefation, benefit of presentations from both companies, I'm glad that Waste Pro is here. I think that's quite important. But to give you the opportunity to ask questions and to seek clarification, so I'm just a bit concerned on that. We've had proposals and public comment and engagement on other issues that have been less costs and, you know, less of an impact than something like this, that, you know, our waste management services, it touches literally every personal and professional lives in our city. So, I feel it does merit that level of review and scrutiny. I feel there's pros and cons to both proposals that do merit that consideration, such as, you know, the issuing wheeled containers, you know, changing the number of days that we have pickups, the side versus the rear-loading trucks, the different dumpster, you know, roll-off options, the different recycling container options, and of course, the biggest one is the rates. You know, of course, recycling, that is a major part of this contract, and I'm curious if our sustainability committee was part of this review process. And, you know, this is again, an example of why we need to commit to a full-time, professional-level sustainability coordinator or director to be part of these discussions at that staff leadership level. You know, we've had a twenty-five-year relationship with waste management, and, you know, considering the significant impact that these kind of services have on the city, I think it's the professional thing to do to give both parties the opportunity to fully explain their services and address the questions. You know, like Mr. Eisner was saying, the breakdown of those prices. We're talking twenty million dollars, man, for five years. I, I think that, you know, to get down into those figures a little bit more detailed than, than maybe what has been presented, it requires a bit more discussion. I think there's too many questions left unanswered to, or unanswered or answered incompletely. Again, no fault of the proposals, proposers at all, you know, to move forward with this. So, I don't know if maybe our existing waste management contract has a provision that you could extend it by one to three months to give the opportunity to fully vet this, to answer these questions, make sure all these issues are addressed before we enter into a twenty million dollar, five-year agreement. So, just some thoughts for consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Up on Uthi's Cuyas, five nine five Peninsula Avenue. This roll-off issue's been an ongoing issue for quite some time, but I want to first start off with citizen engagement. Most of us would have just overlooked this unless one of the commissioners on the board asked the, asked the residents. And there was a overwhelming support for staying with, staying with waste management because they liked the service. A lot of the residents had concerns about driving the trucks through the city three times a week for roads and a lot of wear and tear on our roads. I don't know much about it, but I just want to present it. And regarding the five-year contract, is there a way to ask for a shorter contract, maybe two years? I mean, we don't know. I'm looking at this expected increase in rates in, starting October first, we're increasing one point one percent. And we just reduced the water waste rate two point two percent. So, the balance, you know, our discount isn't as much as we thought it was going to be, and I have to go back to tell the citizens of Tarpon Springs that. I'm looking at this rubric here, and waste management scored out perfect when it came to customer service. Waste Pro measured out eleven out of fifteen, which is a seventy-three percent. So, the residents don't mind paying the extra cost if we actually have a timeline or a graph just showing what those expected costs are, if they're going to be giving up customer service. So, that's something the residents do consider. And I'd like to know who measured out this system, who graded it out to come to the numbers we're at, because Waste Pro scored a perfect fifty-five out of fifty-five on points for cost. So, I know we're about saving money, being fiscally responsible, but we're also worried about us as a city serving our residents and being able to provide them a waste service that's good. And the project manager has responsibility, or the project manager has responsibility for the day-to-day administrative of the resulting contract for the city and shall be the Public Works Director of his or her designee. So, I'm. So I'm just looking back, and we're going back off to the roll-offs. Now I know the city makes money off the roll-offs and make a 20% admin fee. I mean, I think that's high, if you ask me. I'd like to be able to see the numbers from the roll-off costs regarding waste management and what 20% that our city was raking in. And where was that money going? Because right now, we're monopolizing 20-yard dumpsters. You know, we're forcing people to go through waste management, and people aren't happy with having to receive the roll-offs within six, seven days. So when they can use third-party who can come do it at a cheaper price and get it out of there faster. So I think we're monopolizing, and now with code enforcement, there's no more anonymous tips, folks. So you're going to have to put a name on it, put your address and email, you know. Certain people are getting tagged more than others who provide this dumpster service, and I think the city, certain members of it was previously involved. I hope that stops and that goes away. So I'd like to ask for a new RFP regarding not to include roll-offs, because you're helping the residents out. You're helping developers out who need it. And we just heard now, tonight, that the city makes money off of the roll-offs, off the residents, and I don't think that's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Bill Gresham, and I work for Waste Management. I almost feel like a resident here. I've been coming to these meetings for over 25 years, and that's how long we've taken great pride in servicing your great city. And I think that's kind of what everybody's been saying, Mike and Jackie. But we're here tonight, to me, is just to discuss the RFP, the evaluation process, which is, which has been brought up. It's 55% for pricing and 45% for everything else you do for the city. So if you say you're going to do this and this and this, then you're going to get, you know, so many points. But in pricing, it's very, that's very subjective. But in pricing, it is not subjective, you know. Whatever your price is, if it, you're the best price, you get 55. So the difference there is much greater than it is in the subjective part of what you actually do for the city. That 45%, like I said, is very subjective, and and it doesn't, and ask for references. I don't know if all the references are contacted. I don't know, know what goes on there, because like it was stated here, everything was done, done very fast. So I was just here to say, you know, let's slow this thing down. And, you know, it's been less than five days, I think, since the final evaluation. And it's, that's pretty fast. And just one little thing that hasn't been talked about, not much anyway, you haven't mentioned it, is that it takes Waste Management 14 trucks to service the city on Tuesday and Friday. That means we're in your city collecting everything residential on Tuesday and Friday. Well, in the base part of the bid, that's very subjective, that was 45 points, Waste Pro said they would use six trucks. So six trucks is just fine if you're going to collect every day of the week in the city. So it's little things like that. Do you want the trucks in there two days a week, or do you want them in five or six days a week? It's just stuff that, you know, that needs to be decided upon before a quick rush to vote is done. And finally, you did receive three responses. Two of the three are sales in another company, or within $1,000 or $2 of each other. Okay? Waste Pro's was very cheap, was 40, 40%. I mean, so why not vote tonight? You know, that's a, that's a pretty good deal to get something like that. But who knows, sitting there, which one's right? You know, which one is correct? You really don't know. We do, we do have a lot of experience, but we did bid 14 trucks, and they only bid six. So, you know, a lot of things like that can make up some of the difference. So I just wanted to make sure that the subjective part was looked at a little bit more before a final decision was made. And I think our time here and what we've done here, what we've helped do for the city here, I can think of hardly any other place I spend my 4th of July, okay? So that's been pretty exciting. So just, you know, slow down, make sure you're getting what you want. And if it's at the best price, that's fine, but it's as long as what you want. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Okay, there's no more comments, so come back to us. The chair will rotate a motion, then we'll be asking, we're discussing, have asking questions. They have a motion on the floor.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We're going to go with discussions. Mr. Funtzen, one of the comments that was made by the representative of Waste Management says that the process, it was too fast. What's the process that we use that is different?
No, it's been the same process. I've been doing this for 16 years, for every year I've been here, every five years I've been here, it's been the exact same process.
I'd like to ask a few questions to the representatives of Waste Pro. Can you please tell us the collection days that you're going to have?
Yes. So our proposal is based on, it's technically, even though we're operating five days in the city, it would be to divide the city in half and have half the city collected for trash on Monday and Thursday, Thursday being the yard waste day, and then the other half on Tuesday and Friday, Friday being the yard waste day. And then the entire city collected on Wednesdays for recycle. So the amount of trucks that were placed at our bid would be the appropriate amount for that collection schedule.
So are you saying half of the people in Tarpon Springs are going to change the schedule, right?
Yes. And we've done this, most recently in Seminole, Florida, actually, we took the contract over from Waste Management in December of 2020. And with the appropriate customer communications and outreach that we do, and we work with your city staff, we feel that that's the best way. We didn't have as much resistance, you know, change everybody. Nobody really loves it. But after the first few weeks and all the customer communications, everything seems to be fine. And it is really the most efficient way to collect the city and to provide dedicated employees that only work in the city of Tarpon Springs. So therefore, they're only collecting here, and they're not doing any other duties on days that we wouldn't be in the city in our unincorporated service areas.
Thank you. I like the fact that you, your pricing is better than your competitors. The, the estimated bill is going to increase $1.15. If we're going with your competitor, we'll increase $8.46, which is a 51%, and yours is 60, 6.9%. Why is a much difference? What do you do different?
So it's, it's basically what we talked about with the collection schedule. That allows for us to use our equipment with more efficiency and provide you with a better, a better rate at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking the, the, the ranking system that they have, the way you've been graded. You have actually scored the highest on the coast. But, but when it comes to, when it comes to service, you were not the highest. Why?
We, yeah, Tom might answer that, because we, while we were present during the evaluation meeting, there weren't specific items that were, were scored, so I can't actually answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. The Evaluation Committee only looks at three of the proposed. We don't see the price right away. So we look at, of course, as, as the qualifications, the customer service, and the recycling services. The reason why the committee decided that there was a little bit lower on the customer service is one thing is we were on the impression in their proposal that some of the recycling that as they collected would end up down in Sarasota. They cleared that up with the, after the, after the score, but that was one of the reasons why. And then we saw a change in the schedule. We just figured that appointed to knock off of that and make a difference. Again, since this has been over, they've explained it pretty well, what they're doing here. So there's the reasons why it was scored down a little bit lower.
Okay, thank you. Service is very important. To provide good service to all residents is very important. What happens if you don't provide good service? Maybe it's a legal question. I don't know, Mr. Tresk?
Yeah, those, those issues will be resolved in the, the preparation of the contract. We can provide default provisions. For example, fines, daily fines, you know, those types of things. So that would be how we would address it. And ultimately, if they did not comply with their contract, you could claim they're in default and then terminate the contract if it gets that bad. So.
Thank you. My last question. Do you have a community involvement program? I mean, you're going to give something back to the community for all the money you're going to be making?
Yes. So that's something that's, that's really important and one of our core pillars. Our tagline for our company is actually caring for our communities. I actually serve as the Board Chairman for Keep Pinellas Beautiful. Other employees do different activities, and we really look to try to get really engaged in hands-on activities in all the communities we service and hope to service. So yes, that, the answer to that is yes.
And you give me some examples that you've been doing?
Of, for Tarpon Springs or any of the other?
No, the other cities in regards to the community involvement.
So we're, we're involved in different, whether it's, you know, fireworks for 4th of July, or whether it's beach cleanups. It could be, you know, any of the charity involvement, you know, that are specific or key, key attribute, key and, key initiatives in each community. You know, it varies from place to place, but we do, we're very hands-on, whether it's time and/or financially. We, we contribute to the communities.
Would you do like a 4th of July picnic for the, for the residents as well? Thank you. That's all I have. Vice Mayor Carr.
What about Christmas lights?
As long as they don't end up in the recycling stream. Yes.
Well, Commissioner Donovan, there you go. You got some Christmas lights this year. Tom, I've got a quick question. Is there SLA involved with this agreement? Or, there's two Toms here. City Attorney, I guess, would be there, would there be an SLA in there? I know you mentioned about fines and so on, if the service levels weren't there. So assuming that would be the SLA, right?
So the contract has not been prepared as of yet. We got a question on that today. Rob Ish and Phil turn my office is going to be preparing the contract. So it has not been finalized as of yet.
Okay. I've got a question about start times. What's the proposed start time to actually pick up residential and commercial dumpsters and cans?
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM. Tom, is that what it is today?
Yes.
Okay. Do we monitor that from the city perspective, or you just rely on complaints?
No, I've been lucky enough to have Waste Management for all these years. There's a little bit of trust over here, but we will monitor if we have any issues.
And Waste Pro has GPS devices, so they can provide backup that, I mean, on a quarterly basis, saying they're not in the city before 7:00 AM?
Yes, we can provide GPS, and we also have Third Eye camera systems to provide some video footage as well.
That's the same for commercial or residential, because we have commercial and residential mixed, right, all around the city? Okay. How would the dumpsters work? Tom, coming back to Tom, not City Attorney.
Tom, too.
How many dumpsters does the city have, do you know? I'm sorry, not, not the city buildings, but total dumpsters in the city?
I know that we have about a little over 650 commercial accounts. You do have some residential that have, that have containers. So you're probably somewhere in around a 700.
So Waste Pro is planning on bringing in 700 dumpsters over a period of time, or how does that work?
Well, let me just clarify one thing. There are some residents, some commercials that use a total service. They're in a little bit less over there, but somewhere between that 650, 700.
600 to 700 dumpsters? That's a lot of semis, I would imagine, for, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, during our normal transitions through these RFP bids, and we, we work hand-in-hand with the current contractor on a good relationship on the transition process where, you know, we've already spoken with Tom about potentially using a facility within the city of Tarpon Springs for staging area to where there's no lull between customers on a container, to where we would bring a container in, a Waste Pro container in, swap it out with the Waste Management one, haul it to the staging area, and communicate directly with Waste Management on them pulling their containers out of the, the city.
Okay. Can you clarify the days of service for me again, one more time? Just want to make sure I have that right.
Yes, sir. It would be Monday, Thursday for one portion of the city, is that for garbage, and Tuesday, Friday for the other. And then on Thursday and Friday, those two areas would be, have their yard waste serviced as well. And then all of the city would be serviced recycling on Wednesday.
Would you be willing to look at doing recycling on one of the other days? Currently, that's how we had in the past at the city. I'm not sure, Tom, you probably know the history of this. It used to be on Wednesdays. When I take the trash out to the curb, it's nice to take it out twice a week instead of taking it out three times a week. And also having the trucks on our roads multiple times a week as well is a big difference, in my opinion, in the neighborhoods, than having it only on twice a week in the neighborhoods. Is that something you all would be willing to at least look at further, or something along those lines?
I mentioned this to Tom earlier. I mean, we'd be open during the negotiations to, to discuss this, but really, I mean, you know, in order to provide that, that great rate, we really do need to have it with the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, all-day Wednesday recycle.
Okay, I don't support a Wednesday pickup, so that's just something I, I don't support. I think it's important to have it only two days a week with all the kids in our neighborhood. We have a lot of different kids. So traditionally, in Tarpon Springs, we're not like a, a normal neighborhood you'd see in other communities. We have a lot of mixed open neighborhoods, or it's not like a traditional subdivision. So it's just, I just have concerns with the amount of schools, the amount of kids that we have, that, that's an extra danger, I think. A safety issue, in my opinion. So I would like to see that Wednesday go away, and I think you guys could figure it out somehow. I don't know how you do that, though. Going back to the price, is that the best price you guys offered? Do you feel that's the best price you guys offered in their proposal?
I, I do, yes.
Yes, okay. For clarity, there's a public comment about admin fees. Admin fees aren't involved in the contracting itself. It's a separate discussion. Tom, you'd like to confirm that?
Yes, that's, that's the city fee over there. So that's, I guess, a separate discussion. It has nothing to do with their price.
Okay, got it. And then for clarity, is Waste Pro publicly traded or privately held?
We're privately owned.
Okay. And then for just clarification, we got our backups last Thursday, I think it was, Mark, or, yeah, it came out Thursday. So it was nice. We had all the backup at that point. There was an email that came out later today, or earlier today, I'm sorry, just a summary of our current costs. If you wanted to look at it further, it was just a summary of it, so it wasn't anything new. So the full backup was there. Had a nice conversation with our Finance Director and also Procurement Director about this. One thing I love about RFPs is that you really get to see a big cost difference. So individually, if we went with Waste Management or, I think it's Orion, Waste Management would be $101, close to $102 more a year per home in year one. And year five, it'd be close to $115 more. With Orion, it's $116 more a year. So to me, dollars speak in this situation. I believe there's customer service items that are important to look at, and I believe Waste Pro's going to come through with this. I want to thank you for your service and your partnership with the city of Tarpon Springs for the past, how many years was it? 25? 25 years. And I know it's a tough, when it comes down to dollars and delivery, it's tough to, to say goodbye in this situation. I know it's a significant amount of revenue for y'all, but at the end of the day, I know the residents are going to be happy with this situation. And obviously, you have the chance to earn the business back and work with us again in five years from now. Hopefully, it's not a goodbye forever. And, but at the end of the day, I, I do think Waste Pro's the best, the best route to go. I mean, it's a significant, $8 million, sorry, I was choking up on that one, over the five years is a significant amount of money. And I'm excited that you all are here and willing to, to be here in Tarpon and serve the residents. And obviously, I just, I'm looking forward to great service and... And obviously, I just, I'm looking forward to great service and really the safety. And touch, I'm sorry, touch one more base on me. So do you do anything with like the type of trucks that you use? Are they all diesel trucks with like two miles per gallon? Or you guys have any advancements with any other alternative fuels?
We currently use diesel, but it's all updated with the requirements and standards. But they're diesel, yes, sir.
But it's the low sulfur diesel, so it is more of, it's not the same, but it's more of a comparable to CNG on the emission side.
Okay.
It's a cleaner burn.
All right. And going back one more time, guys. So Tom, you said that they lost a point because they're going to take the recycling down to Sarasota, you thought? So that was a point reduction on the customer service side?
Yeah, because I thought it was part of it. You know, one of the things we look at is sustainability, of course, that'll come up many times over here. The less distance, of course, the recyclers have to travel, which I thought was a benefit. The whole division thought it was a benefit. We were under the impression that was going to end up in Sarasota directly, but we found out after this process was done that it's actually going to end up in Clearwater.
And that's a customer service ranking, you think?
Yes.
Okay.
Part of it is, yes, yes.
And who was all on the board to make this decision?
Beth Hughes from Code Enforcement and Michelle Mims from Finance.
And yourself?
And myself, yes, sir.
Okay. And how many years do you have with trash collection?
Oh, I think I took it about 16, 17 years ago.
Okay. So you've got some experience, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Tarpe.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you all for being here tonight and submitting your proposal. Just to get through some of the questions, you mentioned that you are servicing some surrounding communities.
Yes.
Relatively new service contracts. Are all of your contracts with those other communities five years, or are they less?
Some are less and some are more.
Like three years?
Three to seven.
Three to seven.
With extensions, yes.
Uh-huh, gotcha. And then the mayor asked about some of your goodwill efforts within the community. Do you do any, do you have any conservation contributions to like preserving any lands?
Not anything specific, but we'd be happy to look into those initiatives.
Okay. One of my biggest concerns is also with the scheduling as far as the changing up the schedule. For me, the yard waste collection on Thursday, Friday, just is a common sense issue for me as far as the residents are concerned. So right now, we have yard waste pickup on Monday, which I feel like gives our residents the weekend to work in their yards and do their clippings, et cetera, and then have it picked up on Monday versus Thursday, Friday. So for me, that is of a concern. I'm of the belief that you get what you pay for, and I think that our residents have been overwhelmingly in support of the service that's been given to them by Waste Management. So the Thursday, Friday yard waste pickup is concerning to me. I think that that's going to cause some pushback throughout the community. Like I said, as it exists today, they're used to that pickup on Monday. And then you touched on the residential schedule, but did you also mention the commercial schedule as far as how that pickup will go?
So commercial schedules are done with the individual businesses. We will have a commercial sales team that comes in, verifies service levels with each of the businesses. They'll look at what the current scheduling is, and we'll do our best. And most of the time, it's 100% match to try to keep the same existing service levels. But we operate, I think it's the required six days per week for commercial businesses in the city.
So we don't have an idea of a commercial schedule yet?
Well, we don't have that information, so we've been, we'll work with the city directly as soon as, you know, if we're awarded, we would work with each of those commercial businesses, and that's how the services is done. Tom, do you have any other on the commercial schedule?
The commercial sales will pretty much match what's existing now. That won't change any.
So like, for example, there's a dumpster downtown.
Yes.
And it's picked up on Tuesday, Thursday. You're saying that that will?
Be picked up on Tuesday, Thursday, yes.
So that schedule doesn't go to the Monday, or the?
No, that's only residential.
Only residential.
Yep, just residential.
And then it was mentioned that the Waste Management has 14 trucks Tuesday, Thursday, versus the Waste Pro six trucks five days a week. I also share some concern. I think that there's, I think that there's some benefits to less trucks on the road. Essentially, I think it would, basically, the biggest difference would be the Wednesday pickup as far as the recycling goes, right? One of my other concerns is as it relates to the roll-offs, and it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with you, because we didn't have the roll-off option in our other contracts as well in years past. But I think that that's something that should be excluded from this contract, whether you get it tonight or it goes out to RFP. And I wish that that's something that would have been discussed with the commission going into the request for proposal. I think that we're at a point now where third parties ought to be permitted to procure roll-off dumpsters in the 10 and 20 yards, especially for construction debris. So that doesn't necessarily have anything to do with you, but I think that that's a sticking point for me. What else did I have? Tom, if we were to go back out for a proposal, I guess we could ask for a three-year contract versus a five-year contract?
Yeah, I guess you can ask for any contract you would like.
Is it possible to ask for that now?
We'd have to go back out and rebid the whole contract.
You gotta go back through the process.
Yeah, go back through the whole process, yes, sir.
Uh-huh. Was there any consideration on the staff level for the selection committee, I guess, as it relates to the roll-offs?
There was discussions on this option. There definitely was.
And what were they?
Beth had asked questions on whether, why we use, continue to use Waste Management, not the other ones. But we do, other companies do work in the city here, but they're usually smaller or they're contractor-owned, so.
But it's not permitted?
Permitted, excuse me.
Roll-offs are not technically permitted to be used by a third party?
If they're less than 10 yards, yes. But they can be used if it's a contractor-owned. If contractor owns his own roll-off, he's doing a roofing job, he's got a 20-yard roll-off, it's his roll-off, it's his name on it, yes, he can use that.
Do we know what, as it relates to this bid in the contract, maybe Waste Pro can answer this, as a percentage of the contract, how much is being considered for the roll-offs?
I believe, last year was about 1.7 million.
A year, annually?
Yes, it's a pretty high number. But that would devalue, if you take that out, which you could do, it's up to your choice, it devalues the contract as it is. So somewhere to make up some funds over here because of the value of the contract, you're going to end up probably getting increased costs in residential and commercial services if you take it out.
Yeah, right. And then I guess it would be possible, if we did take it out, to still apply or mandate the application of the administrative fee to other companies that would offer the roll-off service?
Yeah, that would be the decision by the board, yes, sir.
Gotcha. So for me, the roll-offs is a pretty big sticking point, and it has been in years past. I wish it would have been discussed with the board prior to going out for proposals. Other than that, I don't really have many issues with this, with the exception to the scheduling. I think that Waste Management has done well for us over the last two decades, and I think that there's certainly a goodwill, business goodwill aspect that should be considered with your rating system. But for me, the biggest sticking point is the roll-off dumpsters, and I'm not sure I can support this tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've got one question for Waste Pro, and then one question for Tom. I don't care which order. For Waste Pro, we've talked about the service that Waste Management has brought us. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak about what you think makes your service special.
So service is something that is obviously a core focus of our company. You know, it was disheartening to see the 11 out of 15 on the service side. It's something that we practice and we focus on every single day. Our service here and what we based our model on is really trying to look at giving you, not that you didn't receive great service, but just really looking at our standard of great service and having that dedicated team, like I mentioned earlier. So by having that core team, obviously, we've dedicated a supervisor. Those drivers and our helpers will be only used inside the city. So your residents will know them, this is all that they work in, they live and breathe. No matter what we have in our trucks for technology, you still can have that human failure. If they're working here and they're working in other areas, there could be potential for misses. I will tell you also, on the rollout side or initial transition phase, just like we've done for many other contracts, when we've done transitions before, no matter how small or how large, we bring in additional equipment and additional people. So when we have these changes and these service schedule changes, we will have those additional trucks to pick up somebody that, you know, forgot to put their card out because it's, you know, they've been for 20 years getting their service on that Monday. So those are the types of things that we try to do to really elevate things and provide you that more dedicated, top-notch level service. Derek, do you have any other points?
Yeah, to that point, what Tracy said regarding the employees dedicated to Tarpin Springs all week long, as well as the trucks. The trucks that we bid for this are going to be in the city only for Tarpin Springs, Monday through Friday for residential, as well as the commercial Monday through Saturday. So having it on just the city service twice a week, you run the risk of those trucks operating in other areas of the county and dedicated to other areas rather than our bid package with five days a week. Those trucks, those people, all dedicated to your city, 100%.
And then on the phone side, I forgot to mention, we'll have dedicated customer service reps that just, you know, are able to speak on everything related to your service that are here housed in Pinellas County. We won't be calling an automated call center out of state or out of area. So that's another key benefit.
Okay, thank you. And this one would be for Tom. I just want to make sure everybody understands the total contract differences and then the monthly differences. Do you have that on hand?
Okay. Difference between, well, we go right down across the line with all three companies?
Yeah, all three for the total and then the monthly difference.
Total, I can't see all that well, so deal with me for a second here. My glasses are fogged up. Waste Pro, $20,498,911. Waste Management, $28,263,016, about just a little less than $8 million. And Waste Management, $28,687, and, I'm sorry, $28,687,370. Again, close to $8 million.
Okay. And then monthly, I'm seeing the Waste Pro increase would be $1.15, and then the Waste Management increase would be 8.46?
Yes, right, $1.15, 6.9%, 8.46 for Waste Management at 51%, and Orion would be 12.41 at 75% increase, residential.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I got. Really, I mean, I understand that people are hesitant to change, but I think people are also hesitant to give us more money. I mean, I really appreciate the relationship that we've had with Waste Management over the years, but a lot of times when we're discussing bids, it comes down to cost and they're close. And, you know, we talk about things like possible goodwill for a longstanding business relationship, but this is a difference of $8 million. That's not close. So I support the Waste Pro proposal.
Thank you. Commissioner Tiqueros?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Funchen. I've worked with him and also the city manager as well. I had quite a few questions that I sent this morning and got a response this afternoon from Mr. Funchen. The, I put this announcement on Facebook on Sunday, and by Monday, I had 105 comments. I asked people what their thoughts were, and there were a variety of them, but a couple of them were the fact that they wanted to keep the number of times that they see sanitation trucks in the city to two days. And that was precipitated on the fact that I thought that we were only talking about two days plus a Wednesday recycling pickup. But then I later found out that that's not the case. Some parts of town will have Monday, Thursday, others will have Tuesday, Friday, and then the recycling on Wednesday, which is a far departure from what I saw, and quite frankly, a far departure of what the residents think at this point. The one question I have is where in that, the package that was submitted to us actually shows the schedule of those five days, is that in there? I saw the recycling brochure is what I was basing it on?
Yes, it's in there. I don't know exactly what page on it, but I can find it for you if you'd like me to. It's definitely in here.
He calls it for a five-day?
Well, each area will be serviced three days a week.
Three days?
They'll be in the truck. Like, for instance, we split the city on Alter 19. That's the west side, this is the east side.
But when did the split come up as part of, after the RFP or the proposal?
They proposed, they proposed a split schedule over here, Monday and Thursday, one area, and of course, Tuesday and Friday for the other area.
Okay. And that was in the backup material that was provided?
Yes, it's in the, it's in the RFP.
Okay. Let me just continue on. The one thing that is kind of puzzling to me is how the RFP was put together. We've got an RFP that I see some strong distinctions. We've got one provider that will have six trucks, five days a week in the city, and another provider with 14 trucks and two days in the city. Did we, I guess what I'm getting at is that, did we kind of direct, you know, did I push in a certain, did the city push in a certain direction with a number of days or trucks or anything like that? Or was that just strictly, you tell us how you're going to do it?
You tell us how we do it, yes.
Would there have been a significantly different price if we had required two-day pickup?
That would be a question Waste Pro.
Well, I mean, if you're available, please do, if that's okay with Mayor. Can I interchange between the two of them?
Yes, sir, yes, yeah. It would have been a significant increase.
There would have been a significant increase?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
What happens if one of these six trucks breaks down? You mentioned that they are dedicated to Tarpin Springs. What happens in that regard?
Well, we have spare units within our fleet. We have a proper spare ratio. It's pretty standard for Waste Pro to where we have additional trucks on hand, where all of our trucks are required to go through, you know, scheduled PMs and routine where trucks do, are required to go down for X amount of time. So we always have additional trucks on hand to ensure that service isn't delayed whatsoever.
The city of Dunedin, how many days a week are you in that city?
Five days.
Five days. And the same for Seminole?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And?
To that point, though, as well as Seminole, just what we're proposing here today, Seminole is the same way where they were on a Monday, Thursday schedule as well, and we presented the change in days as well to them and went through the whole transition, smooth transition. Like Tracy said, we bring in, during these transitions, we bring in additional trucks as well as personnel to ensure that when there is this big transition, there are no delays in your resident's service.
Okay. The one thing the commission may not know, the city manager knows this, but I was a city manager when we transitioned from city employees and city trucks to commercial hauler, and it did turn out to be Waste Pro. And during that early period, it was kind of, you could very easily get driven nuts with the number of complaints that came in with the amount of trucks driving around the city and so forth. And I'm quite sensitive to that. Also, Waste Management at that time had much larger trucks than what they have now, where curbs breaking up the whole thing. The one concern I have about all of this that we're dealing with tonight is the outreach aspect of it. And I know Mr. Funchen, I think it was like five days since the, I'm not sure if that is an accurate number, five days since the contract's selection was made, that we have it before us this evening?
That is true, yes.
Yeah. I think generally, we don't, I guess my point is, do we have to approve this tonight? I don't know if that, is that a question for you, city manager, of course?
On the timing, I don't know. I defer to Janine. Is there any problem with?
We'd like to. We have a change over here if we go forward with this over here, so it's going to be...
But do we have to?
You don't have to. I guess that's a board decision.
Okay, when's the contract expire?
October 1.
September 1.
I'm sorry, September 30th, October 1. I apologize.
Normally, and I'm not suggesting we do this, but normally, something of this significance, but normally, something of this significance, twenty-one million for Waste Pro, twenty-eight million which was Waste Management, that is a big difference. The one thing we would have, I would have liked to have seen would this go to the Budget Advisory Committee for things of this size, just for them to provide their input and kind of flesh some of the things that maybe we don't see here tonight. We got the information on it Friday. I'll be honest, I was a little surprised that, and this is not any criticism, I was a little surprised that we actually saw it. I saw it on the agenda for Tuesday night. I would have thought that there would have been a little more workup, such as not necessarily a work session, but maybe some just general discussion before we got to this point, so that there would be some exposure to the residents. I just see right now that it's going to be a large departure between going from trucks, two days in the city. And I recognize a split up, but it doesn't matter. You're going to have trucks driving through the city even though they're supposed to be in one part of the city. You're going to see them kind of taking a shortcut or going to someplace else through another part of the city. I would have liked for a little more time for hearing from the residents other than just this Facebook posting that I did with regard to the number of days of trucks being in the city, two versus the five. The other part of it is that many of the residents had expressed some willingness to pay a little more and I'm not sure what that means to have stayed with the current provider, but I don't know that they would be willing to pay that much more. So, I just don't have a feel for that. And the only thing I would like is to, if we could buy some time, is to, to get some feedback from the community, at least to tell them, this is what it's going to cost. These are what the changes are. We don't even know what days of the week, how the town is split up at this point. Is that correct?
No, we have a basic idea. We've always used Alter nineteen as the center line for the city, much like we've done with the Waste Management contract. We had trash and yard waste facility on Monday and then we had the opposite over on the east side of the city, on the east side of Alter nineteen. We realize that same spine as our split.
Okay. There's some other things, such as the yard waste on Monday. That would be my preference as well. I think Commissioner Terapany mentioned that. I'm also, you know, and I just feel that that extra day of recycling, that doesn't need to happen. I mean, I think we need to have some ability to get that on one of those other days. And quite frankly, at this point, I would like to, my preference would be just to hold off on this this evening, get some additional information to the public and hear what they've got to say about it, share with them what the costs are, get a sense of the split that Mr. Funchen just talked about, that these people would be changing on the east of Alter nineteen. They would be getting picked up on Tuesday, Friday. Is that correct?
We haven't made a decision on which way you'd want, you prefer.
One way or the other, okay.
That's easy enough to do, please.
Yeah. And I, that's my, you know, just, those are my thoughts. I don't think I'm ready tonight to approve this contract. I don't know that there's a need to, given that we're talking about September thirtieth. I'm not saying to go out for RFP anymore. I just think we need to kind of hear from the residents a little more on this. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Carr, have another comment?
Yeah, Commissioner Vaticus, if I could ask, what would be the best avenue to, or what are your thoughts of hearing from the residents? So, I can understand that.
Well, you mean to provide information to the residents?
You said you want to hear from the residents more on it, so.
Yes, I think Connect Tarpon Springs, Facebook. I'm sure Waste Pro has a way of having a town hall meeting themselves to explain what the, you know, what they will be doing, perhaps with Mr. Funchen present. I don't think it's a need for the city commission to be present. I mean, we would certainly want to know what the results are and what some of the comments are from that.
Understood, okay, I understand. I was just curious how, what you're looking for from a comment standpoint.
I think it's just a sharing of information. I think when we, when, if there was a newspaper, Daily Re newspaper, although Mr. Rosenfeld is here somewhere and he's going to print this and residents for the first time are going to see, we're going from two days to five days, even though it's split, a completely different thing. And they're going to kind of wonder why we didn't communicate with them better on this. That's all. It's an important thing.
I got it.
My personal experience from twenty-five years ago, it's a big deal.
Understood, yeah.
I think the city manager can attest to that as well.
Thanks. So, I just want to be clear, too, with the yard waste, would you all be willing to move it to a Monday, Tuesday, and so Thursday, Friday? Commissioner Terapany brought this up and he made a valid point. When I do my yard work, it's typically on the weekends. It's in the bucket on Monday, it's picked up on Monday, it's out of my yard.
To the way that we designed this, the bid specs for this, for the five-day and the yard waste on Thursday and Friday is due to, it benefits the six trucks within the city. It would require additional equipment. To move it to Monday, Tuesday, due to, just like the yard waste, most residents accumulate more waste over the weekend. So, your put-out percentage within the community is larger on Monday and Tuesday than it is on Thursday, Friday. So, the equipment would be used to run your yard waste first Thursday and Friday morning, utilize the, utilize the yard waste facility in town and then come back through and run their garbage. Due to the put-out percentage would be reduced significantly.
Sure, okay. So, Tom, let me ask you this, or this might be a procurement question. Is there a piggyback option for any of the contracts in the state? I mean, we piggyback all the time with different contracts. How come we haven't looked for piggybacking on a waste contract?
That would probably be a procurement.
That procurement answer, yes, sir.
Do we have any more? All right.
Yes.
Janina Lewis, Procurement Services Director. Currently on this, we did not look at a piggyback option because it has been an RFP in the past. So, that did not occur to us. Normally with waste contracts, they are very competitive. So, they don't typically tend to land like full-blown state contracts.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm kind of falling in a similar uncomfortableness as we're talking more and more about this. I like cheap. I like the best price. I want to see the best price every time. I do have concerns with trucks in our neighborhoods, five days a week, technically three days a week in each of our neighborhoods. I understand one side of the city, I have no problem with that. One side of the city, there's two trucks, three days a week. Other side of the city, three, two trucks, three days a week. I don't like the three days a week. I can be clear with that one. I don't like the yard waste in the beginning of the, at the end of the month or end of the week either. To me, I think Commissioner Terapany really hit the nail on the head is that we really need to talk to the commission and the commission obviously represents the residents. And Commissioner Vaticus brought up some good points, too, about the residents, what they expect. Do people like change? Hundred percent, no. I mean, if you change whatever, the smallest, slightest thing, you're going to complain about it. I'm not worried about that. I'm not worried about going from one company to another company at all. That's not, that's not the concern I have. The concerns I do have is that it's a completely different model than where we're at today. The yard waste in the beginning of the week is a very important thing, I think. Also, the days of the week is very important. And then when you talk about roll-off services, it makes sense. I mean, there's, roll-off services are a unique situation. You've got contractors using them, they're different, they want to, they're bidding out the jobs. I don't know, can Waste Pro talk about the roll-offs a little bit more about that or what that would look like if that was carved off?
To Tom's point, with roll-off carved off, that would adjust the rates, I think, with all competitors. It is taken into consideration when we all do our pricing analysis to determine, you know, the cost per resident, as well as per yard, as well as per roll-off at all. All that is incorporated into the rate and the overall rate. So, it would, it would change the rate and cause an increase to the residents as well as the commercial businesses possibly.
So, a roll-off that's used for a special occasion is going to increase the resident's rates for the fixed six trucks that you guys are proposing on a weekly basis? Am I understanding that correctly?
Roll-off for special occasions?
Yeah, it's a special occasion. It's not a consistent, right? So, someone's tearing their house up, they're throwing a dumpster and taking it down to Toy Town in St. Pete. It's being thrown out. But we have the fixed collection on a weekly basis with your six trucks that you guys talked about, that's dedicated to Tarpon Springs. So, the roll-off is a separate profit margin and business line of Waste Pro and Waste Management, Orion and Republic and everybody else. So, you're saying because you're paying someone extra, you're paying a different truck for the delivery, you got a different staff to drop the roll-offs because you're not going to get that business potential, you're going to increase the prices for the six trucks that you have, that staff that's fixed here already that you talked about, is going to affect all the residents? And am I understanding that correctly?
So, just like with any of the other companies, we sit and we analyze every detail of the RFP that's put in and we put all of those factors into our pro forma. And then that's when we start looking at, you know, how these different buckets affect each other and what we can do to either shave off things on the residential side, knowing that we're also going to have the other lines of business to cover some of the costs. So, yes, taking something out like that does affect the rest of the pricing structure that we've put in place and probably would do so for the other companies.
Okay. So, I mean, I could, I don't like to rebid things often, but I think at this point, where we're at, we're in a completely different area. The eight million dollars is a huge amount of money. Hundred and fifteen dollars, like I said, at the end of the five years. Over five years, it's five hundred and probably forty bucks a house. But at the end of the day, we're not playing in the same field, I think. Like, we're getting a completely different service. I would like to see a couple of different things and I'd like the commission to share, like Commissioner Terapany and some others have shared, that what we want to see as residents for the pickup. I don't want, nothing against you all. I mean, you came up with the best model because it's the cheapest model, it's the way to go. I do want to see what's best for the residents, though, not what's best for Waste Pro and the best cost, because cheapest isn't always best. So, there's been plenty of concerns that have been brought up tonight that I do have concerns about. So, to me, I think it would be wise to do an RFP to have an option of roll-offs or not, to really see if the roll-offs are a significant difference. So, if there's a million dollars in difference or fifty thousand dollars in difference, I don't know what that would actually fall. Then we've got a, what, Tom, what are they called in our backup here? You have like A, B, and C?
Yes.
The add-ons. Yeah, add-ons or alternatives.
Alternatives, yes.
So, you have alternative one where it's residential, two days a week. It doesn't, I don't care if it's half of the city, one, two days, another half city, two days. Recycling on one of those two days and yard pickup on one of those two days as well. And then the roll-offs as being an alternative one or two. So, I mean, that might be the route to go that I'm leaning right now. Unless there's some type of part of negotiation that, I mean, there's not a contract in place. The bid's been placed. But I mean, would Waste Pro be, have some type of willingness to adjust the days of the week or anything along those lines still?
Vice Mayor, I, you have a motion, you made a motion. We have a second on the floor. But what I'm suggesting is, from what I hear from the board, we're not feeling comfortable with this contract. Suggesting that we defer that to hear from, that way we can hear from the Budget Advisory Committee as well, from the residents. This is a service that is very important to the people of Tarpon Springs. So, I would like to have, I mean, if you agree to that, to have your motion modified, please.
Yeah, when's the next budget advisory meeting? Tom, or, I'm sorry, Mark, or?
Or even nineteenth.
So, who wants to speak?
Nineteenth.
Good. Okay. And then our next meeting is the twenty-fourth, is that right?
Yes.
I've got no problem deferring it to the next meeting. I know there might be more comments.
Okay. I have Commissioner Terapany, Commissioner Vaticus, who want to speak? Want to say something?
Yeah, just a couple.
Yeah.
Am I good?
Yeah, yeah.
Just a couple of points I wanted to make. One is, is that obviously no disrespect to Waste Pro, but you just heard that the reason why it's more cost-effective for them to pick up yard waste on Thursday and Friday is because there's less waste. So, that's not something, to me, that's a huge benefit of our contract with Waste Management is that that's a giant service to our community. Not everybody has a trailer or a truck where they can take their yard waste to the landfill, right? So, I like that service to our community on Monday and I think that most residents would pay for that, right? To be able to still have that service afforded to them. It's more cost-effective for Waste Pro to not have them on Monday, right? Which enables them to offer a lower price. In addition to that, Tom, you said that as a portion of the contract, the roll-offs is about a million dollars?
I think about one point five million.
Okay, so to that point, not all of our residents utilize the roll-off service, right? But you're, all the residents are paying for that. So, why not take the roll-off out of that? In theory, the contract value would be less. And then if you need a roll-off, you can use a third party versus mandatory that you have to use whoever we're under contract with. So, I would support deferring this item tonight.
Commissioner Vaticus?
Commissioner Terapany, what will you support tonight?
Deferm it.
Deferm it. Just some of the things that Vice Mayor Carr brought up and Commissioner Terapany brought up, would that require a new RFP?
Yes, it would.
Two points. As a minimum, I think we need to defer. But if the commission is somewhat hard on some of these things that, I do all my yard work on weekends. Absolutely. And, because I'm always busy during the week with what I'm supposed to be doing as commissioner and you making a living. So, I'm not sure where we go from here, Mayor. I'm not, if we defer it, it's on the condition that we pretty much move forward with what we see here tonight, with the exception of outreach to the residents and get a sense of what they feel. And at that time, in the Budget Advisory Committee, and then we either make a decision, we're going to approve the contract or we're not, and then it goes out to RFP. If we're not happy with some of the things that we see tonight, then I'm not sure why we would want to waste two weeks to hear from the residents and then say that we're not going to want, because of some of the things that are important to us right now, that we wouldn't want the contract in two weeks and we'd waste two weeks for that. And it would go along the line of what Vice Mayor Carr would say. The new RFP would be, I think what you were talking about is add alternates, is something like that. Alternate A, B, and C.
Yep, yes.
And then the roll-offs, I've got a little bit of a different take because that million dollars in that contract's going to have to come up from somewhere. If they drop it off, they still rely on that, you know, that million, the city, the million dollars comes to the city. Is that what you're saying?
I think, I could be wrong on this, right?
No, no, I, that's.
So, my thinking is that if a portion of the contract for the roll-offs equates to a million dollars, then all of the residents share and pay in that million dollars, right? But not all of the residents use roll-offs. So, my thinking would be that if you don't have that million-dollar portion of the contract, then, and residents could select the roll-offs as desired, then the contract portion would be less.
Right.
Am I right in thinking that, Tom?
No, no, actually, if you take the, I said one point five million dollars off the contract, it devalues the contract. Nothing goes back. The residents aren't paying for roll-offs. The roll-offs are paid by individuals looking for that service. If they don't use it, they don't pay it. I'm sorry.
But it's a portion of the contract, right? Of this five million dollars, a million of it is for roll-offs per se.
It's expected income on that, yes, it is.
Right. So, that's my point, is that if you don't, if that's not a portion of the contract, right? I understand that it devalues the contract for the service provider because, you know, in an effort to get the contract, they're saying that they're going to provide the roll-offs, right?
Yes.
But if you're not providing the service, would the costs not be less?
No. The costs would actually go up because they're going to want to make their money over time over here. So, what happened is, there would be additional costs either residential or commercial service. They don't make, we don't take, the only thing we take off of roll-offs is a twenty percent administration fee. None of that money comes back to the city whatsoever. So, if you've got a twenty million dollar contract over here and you take one and a half million dollars off a year, right, you're talking seven and a half million dollars off the value of that contract. They're going to want to make some of that up over here and that will push the residential and commercial prices up.
Really, the only way to determine that is if you rebid the whole deal. Right? I mean.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, right. I mean, listen, I'm with you. I don't see a reason to defer if there's some staking points that aren't going to change, right? And for me, the roll-offs is a sticking point and the yard waste collection is a sticking point. I mean, it just makes sense on the yard waste, right? Like, to me, that's.
Well, let me clarify something. Looks like we've got three options. One is, we have an, we have a motion to approve the item that we have. Another option would be to defer it or to deny this contract and ask for another RFP. So, you've got three options. One of the options would select one of the three.
One more comment, Mayor. As a representative of the residents?
Yes.
Were you asked what was important to you in this contract?
Yeah.
You were? In terms of the scope of service? Were you consulted in terms of what's important to the residents?
No.
Neither was I.
No. But what I'm saying is, I don't think you understand what I'm trying to tell you.
I understand.
What I'm trying to tell you is, we've got three options here.
I understand.
Okay? One is to approve it, to, or to defer it, or to ask for, you know, start all over and ask for an RFP.
With your input.
Okay?
Right.
I don't feel comfortable with that right now. I think if we have the time, this is, Mr. Licuris already has asked, he wants to speak, as well as Mr. Trask. And I'd like to ask Mr. Trask for his legal opinion before we move on.
So, I agree with you, you have three options. You can approve the contract or approve the award of the RFP. You can also defer it. But my advice to you relative, if you're not going to defer it and you're not going to approve it, to approve it, that you not only reject this bid, but you reject all bids. And then, then the RFP would move forward again, based upon direction that you give the city manager or city staff. So, don't get hooked up on, there would be a motion to deny the award of this RFP to this, this particular service provider, it would be to reject all bids and set it out for a new RFP.
Start all over.
Right. Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I, one question to that, it's going to, I need the help of our purchasing director. Two questions. One, how long of time do you need to put this back out to bid, with some of the comments that you heard this evening's from the commissioners, of some of the things they're concerned about?
If we're going to redefine the scope of services, based on input, then probably two weeks, to get that all together and rewritten, draft and approved. It's a minimum of 21 to 30 days for RFPs, because we like to give, based on the, like, this is a large proposal, so we like to give the vendors enough time to put a proper package together, so it's a minimum of 21 days.
Okay, and then, the second question, is there a provision in our current sanitation contract for extending the period past the expiration?
We can go up to six months on any of our contracts through the agreements, we try not to go over that, but we could do an emergency bridge, yes.
Okay. So, we have time for that.
So we can do that. Let me hear from Vice Mayor and Commissioner Donovan, what did you take on that?
Can I just ask a quick question, too? I mean, could we look at piggybacking also, other contracts? Is that something we could do?
We can research and, and see what else is out there, yes we can.
So I think that would give us an idea of what, really, if it's a good deal, or where we're at, right?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan, he has any comments?
Yeah, again, just, just two points to make, and then I know Waste Pro wants to speak again. Just one, I, I really don't like the idea of balking at an eight million dollar difference. I just think from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, this is pretty strange. And then, also, I feel like we just spent the first half of this conversation saying, not enough residents knew about this, we need to go out to the residents before we make a decision, and then the second half of the conversation turned into, well, we already know our decision, we don't like this. So, who needs them, let's rebid, let's, let's just reject it all tonight. So, I think that's a little wishy-washy, and, and again, I think the eight million dollars is, is more important than we're making out to be.
Okay. So, let's move on, I need a, you want to say something before?
Yeah, can we just make two points of clarification?
To the point of regarding the yard waste on Monday, Tuesday, for example, other contracts that we have, the City of Seminole, as well as North Reddington Beach, those do not have a split between their yard waste and their trash, it's commingled and taken to Pinellas County during, if, if that's up for discussion, that could be something that could accom, that, if that's a approval, we could accommodate that service on Monday and Tuesday. The issue is, is the, one, the trucks, the number of trucks required, due to the put-out percentage of trash on Monday, Tuesday, require, if you're going to do yard waste, it's going to require additional trucks to accommodate both services. So, that, or, that being the issue of your increased hours due to running one round of yard waste within the city, disposing of the yard waste, and then coming back for the trash. If you were to commingle and take to the Pinellas County, it would be all in one load, and then on Thursday, Friday, we could accommodate the, using the yard waste facility. And do yard waste Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Commissioner Vaticaris, do you ladies, do you have something to say?
I, the, the main point is that the residents haven't been consulted.
Uh-huh.
And, and I've learned from experience, whether it, it comes across as wishy-washy, that's a point that we've missed. I think it's a little quick to come in five days after the bids were opened, without any kind of just outreach to the residents, that we could have at least gotten some feedback between the time the bids were open, and the time it's before us, at least that way we've heard from the residents as well, what their preferences were. I heard, just because I put up the Facebook, but what I gave them was not, it was based on that sample brochure that was in the package, Waste Pro package, and that suggested the Monday, Thursday pickup with the recycling on, on, on Wednesday, and then the yard waste, I thought, was either both on Monday and Thursday, but as Mr. Funch, I thought you told me it was on Monday, just the one day, not the Thursday or Friday for the yard waste. I might be wrong, but in any case, the information was not even clear to me, and it was in our, it was in our pack-up. And, I did, in fairness to Mr. Funch, and he shared all that information with me this afternoon, but it, it, it's just, it's, it's just something I feel we owe our residents, that's all. We can defer it, and, and then it sounds like even if we decide we don't want to do it, after residents taking into account what Commissioner Donovan, Donovan said that eight million dollars is not, we could still, we still have time to, to cancel all, or, or deny, or whatever you want to call it, the three proposals, and start fresh again.
Commissioner Terrapini, wants to do the last comment?
Two seconds, I just want to make this comment, as it relates to the eight million, because Commissioner Donovan brings up a legitimate point, right? But, in my opinion, I don't think we're comparing apples to apples, right? I think that this commission, with the residents' benefit to weigh in, needs to give direction to procurement on what we're looking for service-wise, right? Like, the difference in the eight million dollars is a different approach to how they're servicing the community, right? So, the, a big difference is no yard waste on Monday, and yard waste on Thursday, Friday, which is a less of a cost. So to me, we need to give direction on what level of service we're looking for, and then I don't think the difference will be as drastic in terms of millions of dollars range, that's all.
Okay. I think we had enough discussion.
I, I think the answer was made, that the difference in, a large difference in the price between the contracts is the six trucks versus four trucks, fourteen trucks, and the two-day pickup versus the, the five days a week. And that's something that, I don't know how we would do that, but that's going to be the biggest difference in the contract price, it's the way I see it.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you made the motion.
Yeah, I want to keep it deferred to the next meeting, and give the Budget Advisory a chance to look at it.
We had a second on that as well?
I was the original second, but I'm not going to second the motion with the amendment.
Have a second?
I would rather see it be rebid.
Do we have a second on the motion to defer it?
Oh, I'll, I'll second it, for the reason that we've got time to go out to bid, if after two weeks, we, we realize that this isn't going to work for the residents. Which is going to, is going to require a, a strong outreach on the part of the city staff, and get that information, and on our parts as well, to hear from the residents, to see what they want to do. Now that we've got the facts on what the deal is, I think it'd be a little clearer for them to make a decision and tell us what they think.
So, Vice Mayor, you're deferring it to the next meeting?
Yeah, is it the twenty-fourth of August?
Twenty-fourth of August, okay.
Mayor, you mentioned the Budget Advisory Committee.
I think it's, to me, I think it's a very good idea, since we defer it...
I think it is, well, but I don't know when they meet, I guess is one of the...
Nineteenth, nineteenth.
Huh? I don't know when they meet.
Nineteenth of August is when we're meeting next.
Okay, so we'll be, yeah. Also, going to, I'd like to hear from the, from the residents, what they think about all that, and have a, a very clear explanation, the difference in price and what services, the difference of services as well. Okay. Roll call, please.
On what?
Yeah.
On, on the motion that we got, we're deferring it.
Just for clarity, I'll, I'll clarify the motion, it was deferring it to the twenty-fourth, letting the Budget Advisory review this in the nineteenth, and then, I guess on the twenty-fourth, we'd make our final decision on either to denying all bids, or moving forward with one of the options.
And we're going to make every effort to...
Communicate to the residents?
Communicate to the residents.
Yes, sir, through social media.
Website, everything we got.
Sure.
I, that, that's my second as well.
All right, so we got a second?
Yes.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
No.
Commissioner Terrapini?
No.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes. Thank you.
Mayor, I, I need to ask for an excusal for the rest of the meeting.
We already verified that with the attorney, you don't need to get an excuse.
Okay, great.
Thank you. We are now going to take five minutes break, we'll be back. Thank you.[1177.83]
We are now reconvening the BOC meeting at nine oh eight P M. The next item on the agenda is item number seven, the award RFP number twenty one zero one thirty seven PJL, comprehensive plan. Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Renee Vincent, Plating Director. Really happy to be bringing this forward and hopefully moving forward with the update, long overdue update of the city's comprehensive plan. The city did receive four proposals from our, from our RFP, from Tindell Oliver, SNME, Kim Lee Horn and Associates, and Calvin Giadorno and Associates. After the, during the written evaluations, things were sufficiently close, I'll use that term, that the committee ultimately decided to go ahead and do direct interviews, presentations and interviews of all, all four of the consultant candidates. And ultimately, the committee did select Tindell Oliver and recommended awarding the contract for the services to them. Tindell Oliver demonstrated a very strong understanding of the proposed scope of work, especially the, really the necessity of coordinating this update with the city strategic plan that's also, you know, under development. And really, the, understanding the city's desire for, you know, an updated comprehensive plan could be really organized around focus and priority areas versus kind of the traditional element format. And we have the latitude under state statute now to do that. So if you have questions, we'll do the best we can to answer them. Pat McNeese is also here, was on the committee. But with that, that is our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to public comments on this item. Do you have any public comments on this item? Just come forward.
I'm on Yautia's Cuyas, five nine five Peninsula Avenue. I'm excited that the comprehensive plan is starting and we're all discussing our options. I am looking at the company rating, and I do see Kim Lee Horn was at an eighty-one rating, third. And I'd also ask, aren't they the ones doing the consulting when it comes to distant avenue? Or at least they're about to explore more, so maybe this rating is just relating to the comprehensive plan, which that's okay if that is, but I just wanted to point that out. I am looking at the grading system as well, and I see the names on here, and most of them are from the planning department, as well as Ms. Lemmons, economic developer, and were there anybody else involved with this grading system? Why is it just them who's coming out with this grading system? Is it? How subjective is it? And I want to thank the board here, because it's a paragraph right here, is that is the turning point in Tarpon Springs. And says, "The city is, the city is also at a turning point in its development. There are very few developable tracts of land remaining. Those that are still undeveloped are highly desirable to preserve as open spaces for future generations, and conversely, highly desirable for development. There are many questions for the future that the update of the comprehensive plan seeks to address. How will we respond to sea level rise? What does a development end state look like for the city? Is there an economic scale with regard to population and economic growth, such as a city can be financially solvent without relying on continued growth? How do we transition from the needs-based economic development to asset-based economic development? Do we need additional residential growth? Where and how should we accommodate additional residential growth? What is the desired balance of residential, commercial, industrial, and passive open space land use? And how do we continue to attract visitors, residents, and investment without overwhelming or damaging what we value the most about the city?" I think that's very important. There are different politics right now, or in a shape right now in Tarpon Springs where these are the main issues. What's left to develop? The, you know, some people desire to develop it, other, over others. The majority of the residents speaking want to preserve what land we have left. We don't want to conform to the countywide special area plan. We want to have our own set of rules. So we're not forced to listen to what the city, or what the county has for us. And the strategic plan process, it's important as we are hiring individuals in the future, that they are familiar with the strategic plan, with the comprehensive plan, how to implement, how to facilitate. They have prior experience doing it, and it's very important as this board, when you're doing applications, looking at past references of people, looking who are the references, the years of relationships, what their experiences with strategic planning. That's where we set up ourselves to succeed and to perform to the best of our ability for the city of Tarpon Springs. As far as all that, I think we're going in a good direction. Our next step is to start engaging with the citizens, whether it be that connect website, send a postcard out, click the link, and they'll all get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item?
Anita Prost, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. This is something we have to have. But we cannot lose sight. People have property rights. I had one commissioner tell me he's sick of some people living off the community. We all live off the community. We go to the grocery stores, we go to the stores in town. We utilize our banks, we utilize everybody in this community. That's what keeps your community alive. We must remember, you have to have development that's a bloodline to your community. If you don't, your community dies. Not all businesses are right for Tarpon Springs, not all developments are right. But you need that money coming into your city, you need to keep it going. And if you make it too restrictive, you have a recession here and we will die. Remember that.
Any other public comments on this item? Here none? Okay. The chair with the tenement motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent, our comprehensive plan has been, has not been updated in a long time, and it's overdue. Can you tell us about the process that you're going to use? Are you going to assign somebody to, or someone to work with a contractor to provide supervision and guidance? And how are we going to engage the citizens with the process?
So yes, there will definitely be, you know, primarily myself, you know, and, you know, both of my principals, my planners. We will, we all have to be involved in that process. It's not a one-person project management deal. The applicant, excuse me, the consultant that's being suggested has provided a very robust public engagement process. So from, from my perspective, the most important thing that, that we need to do is ensuring that we get that integration with the strategic planning process. And that, that was one of the things that was a draw with this particular consultant. They absolutely understood that. So, you know, we will be using both, you know, COVID-willing, in-person and hybrid approaches to the public engagement. This is what they've been proposing. You know, we obviously will have to help with coordinating and scheduling and things of that nature. They'll be doing a lot of the, the actual meetings themselves and producing the content and working with the public as well, you know, myself and my staff planners. So, you know, they, they have a very robust upfront public engagement process that really is meant to, to, to first engage the community and see where we are, and also perform the data and analysis that's necessary. And then, how does that affect the existing goals, objectives, and policies? So they kind of turn the process a little bit, instead of just starting with what's in there now and trying to update. They, they really, they pushed the public engagement to the front of the process. So that was very important for us.
Good. Thank you. Shall I have Commissioner Donovan?
Ms. Vincent just answered my question, so I'm good. I'm good.
Good. Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Thank you, Mayor. The, I don't want to sound too geeky, but this is a very exciting time for me. It really is.
That's good.
Between the strategic plan and updating the comprehensive plan, it, it's something that we lived by a long time ago, and I'm just glad to see it's coming back. As far as new elements and some elements that will drop off, are there any thoughts on that yet, or is that something that you're going to kind of, it's going to evolve as you go through and consultations with the consultant?
There are certain elements that are still required statutorily. So, but we don't necessarily have them carved out as individual elements. What, what we're looking for is, how do we take, because there's, if you're familiar with the plan, and I know you are, there's a lot of overlap and repetitiveness between, between goals, objectives, and policies. And that was required back in the day. So eliminating that repetition and, and organizing the elements around kind of functional areas, you know, that's what we're envisioning. And, and the applicant, excuse me, the consultant, they understood that process, so I think we can get there. I think the one thing that, you know, that is absent in our plan now is, you know, is a good economic development piece. We don't have that now. We didn't necess, and, you know, because it's so absent, I think that's something we're going to have to address eventually. I don't know if we can actually address it within this particular scope, but I think it is a need. So maybe through the next budgeting cycle or something, we look at, you know, how do we, how do we pull that piece in? Because I think it's very necessary.
Will these new elements, perhaps like the one you just?
They could, yes.
Would be part of this process? It would be?
The economic element?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I think we're going to get a certain amount of economic information, you know, out of this process. Would, you know, would it be a full-blown, like, economic analysis of the city? I think that's a different analysis that's not included in the scope.
But I mean, will you create an element out of this process, or will you say that this is what we need to do one, and then we may need to have some additional assistance later?
I think that's probably going to be the approach.
And any thoughts on sustainability? Whether there will be one of these things that goes across all of the elements, or there'll be one element that? You're going to think about that one, too?
That's, that's the evolution of, you know, is it better to have a sustainability element, or do we, is that becomes one of the focus areas that we look, that, through that lens at all the elements? That, we're still juggling with that.
I'm sure you'll be talking to our sustainability committee.
Absolutely.
That's fine. Thank you very much, Ms. Vincent.
Ms. Vincent, it's going to take like a year for that to be completed?
We have, it's, we have an eighteen-month timeline.
That's okay. And I'm sure you'll come back to us to give us a progress report, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Well, we have no more comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr? Oh, so I'm sorry. Mayor, who is this?
Yes. Okay, we're going to item number eight, which is the risk assessment, assessment for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two internal audit plan. Mr. Pulis, your first presentation.
Hello, good evening Commissioners. I, I presented the plan, or I put it on the agenda last week for you all to review, and that's got most of the detail in it. And this evening, I just wanted to kind of go over the plan at, at a high level, to kind of explain anything and answer any questions that, that you all might have. And this will be the, the risk assessment, an overview of the process, and the internal audit plan for, for this coming year. So the question, the question I get asked most often is, is what is a risk assessment? And it's basically, the definition is, a risk assessment is a systematic process to evaluate, identify, and prioritize potential audits based on the level of risk of the organization. What does that mean? Basically, the risk process, the risk assessment is just a way to determine who gets audited first. At the end of the day, that's, that's really all it is. It's, but it's, it's following a, a uniform process, so, so it's fair to all the different entities in, in the organization. So I'll just go over real, real high level, what, kind of my methodology in, in doing the risk assessment. There's a few major steps, and then I'll talk about the, the actual audit plan. There's, if you asked a hundred auditors how to do a risk assessment, you'll probably get a hundred different answers, because there, there's a high level of subjectivity to them. And like I said, you ask a hundred auditors, you'll get a hundred different answers, a hundred different ways to do them. Some, some do them by, at a process level. I chose to do mine at, at a department level. So the first thing, the first thing I did is, it's called identifying auditable units. So you take the audit universe, which is, if you look at an org chart, there's the city of Tarpon Springs org chart, there's probably forty, forty-five different departments, or offices, whatever, just all those squares, if you will. I broke those down into twenty-eight departments. That kind of follows logically with, with the, the two thousand twenty-one adopted budget. So that was, that was the first thing. So I identified the twenty-eight departments. Then I, what you do is you define, what I did anyways, define risk categories, and financial, operational, compliance, reputational, and assurance. Some of those, the first three, financial, operational, compliance, are pretty common risk categories in risk assessments. I chose reputational specifically for Tarpon Springs, because, I mean, obviously, just coming to the meetings, the, the small city, and I think the smaller the city, the more community involvement you have. So I think the local government's reputation is, is that much more important than it is for, say, a bigger city. So I thought reputational would be a, a good risk category to, to throw in there. And again, you can, you know, you can have, I've seen risk assessments with seven, eight categories. I've seen them with as little as one category. Some auditors will just look at, say, financial, because it's quantitative and it's very objective. But to me, that's a little, it's a little boring, and it doesn't really take into account some of the, the smaller, smaller departments where some risks may, may be lurking. So then after we, after we get the audible units, the risk categories, we, we develop what we call the measurement rating criteria. And again, likelihood impact, that's what most, most risk assessments will use. It's pretty standard. I've seen some that have some other rating criteria, but they, they get a little hokey, some of them, and they get to the point where it's kind of hard to, to really measure those types of things. So I wanted, I wanted to keep it simple in, in that regard. And obviously likelihood, self-explanatory, the probability event happening, and then we rate that on a scale from low, medium, or, the scales, low, medium, and high. Same thing for impact, the effect of an event occurring. Again, low, medium, and high. And then the next step is gathering the data. So you have, you know, your risk categories, you have your, your, your auditable units, which are basically departments. Then you have your red, measurement rating criteria. Then next question is, well, what do you do with it all? Well, you got to gather some data. And I chose to use questionnaires and in-person interviews. The questionnaires, I sent one to each director, and it's a series of open-ended and closed-ended questions. And each one of the, each one of the questions mapped back to a risk category. So let's say for, operational, let's say that category, there'll be five or six questions. The financial category, there'll be, I think there was three questions dealing with budget size, FTE, and another one, I just, I can't recall. And then all those get graded on a scale, on a, on a scoring sheet that I developed using the, the measurement rating criteria. And I end up coming up with a, you get a score for each department. After I did that, then I, then I did the in-person interviews where I interviewed all the directors. And some of them I spent, you know, a half hour with, some of them I spent two, three hours with. And the purpose of that is, is, is several-fold. It gives them an opportunity to ask me about the risk assessment process and, you know, what it entails. And it gives me an opportunity to learn more about, not only the city, but their, their specific department. It's also, one of the, the major points, though, or the reasons for it, is it, it, it covers up any of the blind spots that could be in the questionnaire. Because no matter who you are, no matter how good you think your questionnaire, there's always going to be blind spots. There's always going to be something you missed. So it, it gives me an opportunity to, to learn more, learn things that the questionnaire didn't tell me. Okay, so, and then also as well, well, we, you'll see it in, in, in the next slide, in the results, the, the questionnaire, there, there, there's a point category for each of the risks, or points for each of the risk categories, and then there's a separate category that's for BOC concerns and auditor concerns, where I have the ability to adjust the score up or down, a total score. If I think there's more risks that weren't uncovered in the, in the, through the questionnaire, or if I think some of the risks that were identified weren't, weren't as relevant as, as I thought they were, or as the questionnaire, questionnaire would dictate. So the, the last step is, I guess I just kind of alluded to it, is compiling the data, scoring each department, and then ranking each department. And, and adjusting the scores as needed. So these are the, these are the results. I don't know if you all can see that too well. But the first column on the, and they're sorted by, they're sorted by the highest risk categories, or the highest risk departments. And, and let me, let me just qualify this by saying, if, if, if what I consider is a high-risk department, that doesn't necessarily mean that department's not run correctly, or it's no reflection on management. Some departments are going to be inherently more risky than others. That's just the nature of the beast. And some departments will, you know, will, will almost never be that high up on, on a risk assessment. So it's got nothing to do with management or how they're, they're, they're running their departments. So if you, they're sorted from highest to lowest, the redder the cell is, the, the more risky department is, and the greener the cell is, the less risky it is. And the column on your, your left is the total risk score, and then there's a column for each subsequent risk category. And then the score adjustments is the last, the last column, and that's, I mentioned earlier, that's my opinion and concerns from, from the BOC. So you can see some, some departments, they were adjusted upward, some departments were adjusted downward. Oh, and the top four departments, I should have mentioned this earlier, the top four will be on the audit plan for, for two thousand twenty-two. And the reason I chose four is just not sure how long each audit would take me, so I assumed three hundred hours each audit. And that could change as the year, as the, as the, as I get, to start getting through, through the audit plan. It's like I mentioned before, like you saw before on the, on the previous slide, the top four were clerk collections, not the whole clerk's office, just the, the collections. I, I divided that office up into, into, into two departments. There's clerks, civic responsibilities, if you will, and then clerk collections, and then fire department, the fire rescue portion, human resources, and then Public Works has, I want to say, six or seven departments. Public Works is just basically a grouping of, of, of departments. So Public Works, just a stormwater portion of, of Public Works on the audit plan. And like I said before, the, the, the report I gave you has details about all my hours and everything like that, and, and some preliminary audit objectives. I just wanted to keep this real simple. I did want to, that's not in the report, I did want to mention a few items for future consideration. And that would be planning and zoning and building services, maybe a combined audit of the two. As you can see on the, on the, on the, the roll-up of all the departments, I actually graded them down, which is good for them, both, both departments, because they're in the middle of implementing what they call E-Plan, which is a, an electronic, what's the word I'm looking for? Electronic approval system for their plans. So I didn't, I didn't think it'd be fair to, to audit them in the middle of that, so, but it's, it's definitely, there's definitely two departments that I, I think we should be focusing on. I mean, obviously, it's a lot of what, what you all do, is, you know, voting on planning and zoning issues and, and things like that. So that's important. Also, the city attorney's office, I didn't, I didn't include him in this. I didn't consider him an audible unit for, for, for this risk assessment, but I think on the next one, I'd like to include him. The reason I didn't is because I wanted to just focus on departments that are under the city manager, or that, that, that deal with the day-to-day operations of, of the city. So I didn't, I didn't include the city attorney on this one. Also, the city strategic plan that you all are well aware of, that, that the, the city's in the middle of, of producing. Internal audit usually does play a role in the, in the strategic plan. I'd like to use that down the road as criteria to audit against, which is, that's a common practice in, in the audit world. Also procurement services. I'd like to look at, down the road, the process for awarding contracts. Not that, not there's anything wrong with, with the process now, I'm just, these are just things that I'd like to, to consider down the road. What I consider high-risk things and things that the, the BOC spends a lot of time on, obviously, as we saw tonight. a lot of time on, obviously, as we saw tonight. And just one more thing I'd like to consider in the future would be the actual risk assessment. This is the first time I've done a risk assessment by myself, so I'm used to doing them with, with other people. And I think it's the first one that was done here internally and got at least ten years or so. So I'll get some feedback from the directors, from you all as well, and see if they liked the assessment, where it can improve. Do I want to scrap this one and start a new assessment next year? Because I have to do one annually. Or do I want to just build on this one? There's, there's a lot of things I can, I can add to it and make it more complicated as the years go by. I want to kind of keep it simple for this year. So that's another thing I'm going to look at next year, is the, the actual risk assessment and, and the process therein. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Pulis. We're going to go to public comments, and we'll come back
Panigotis Puyas, five nine five, Peninsula Avenue. First, I want to thank the board that we have our internal auditor, Mr. Pulis. He did mention there wasn't an assessment done in the last ten years. What the city's done before is hire a couple external auditors and come in, do some simple checks and balances, some simple areas, departments in our city, and call it a day. It's been on record and, you know, we got to bring out, we got to bring out the light of what's happened of the charter review committee dominated by good old boys who support the network to better their involvement in the government. Some people might not like to hear it, but it's there on the record. As far as these, the tests, when will we have the findings for this year's audit? And I'm happy that he pointed out the top four departments that he will be auditing this year regarding public works, stormwater. And I believe I saw the golf course on another part of it. And, well, the golf course right in the middle, but that's another big issue, a hundred thousand dollars in the red every year, which I don't know how we are, when we're running forty-five dollars to play nineteen, to play eighteen holes during the winter time. And I'm interested to see these findings. We want transparent and honest reporting, whatever the outcome is of it. And this process to get this internal auditor has been a long time overdue. And some of the commission members, even past commission members have said, oh, well, we don't have enough work for a full-time auditor. Well, ask him that. I guarantee he says these, there's plenty of work going on around here. There's plenty of stuff to check. There's plenty of stuff to check on agenda items as they're coming up. If the city manager or the board can work with him as he's working on these audits with other stuff, how he can review agenda items to see the best costs, efficiency, I mean, anything out there to do what's best for the city and save our bottom line and protect our, protect our money. So I'm happy he's here. And congratulate the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Here none? We need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Pulis, appreciate the presentation and I appreciate the discussion we had the other day. Explain to me your methodical process and how you go, how you're going to identify and how you're going to rank, what departments you're going to, to do audits. I'm sure the directors are looking forward to that process and they're going to be very cooperative with you to provide you all the necessary information you need so you can complete that. Tell me, after you complete the, the audit, you'll come back to us and you let us know your findings. So how's that going to work?
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely, Commissioner, or Mayor. What I would do is, I mean, it's, it's kind of a long, a long process, but the, the, the department director and the city manager, because it's their, it's their departments, they would get a, a copy of the, of the report first. And I'd give them a chance to address each finding. And then I would take their findings and, or their, their rebuttal, whether they concur, whether they don't concur. And I would put that into the report. And then ultimately, it would, it would, it would go in front of the board. Absolutely, you guys would all get a copy of it, yes. And I don't think I'd do a presentation on it or anything unless you wanted me to, but I'd probably just have you guys, you know, read the report and then answer whatever questions you have. It'd be at your discretion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Terpenny, you got a comment?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Pulis. Presentation was very professional. And I think that, not just based on this presentation, but I think that this board made the right decision in, in hiring you. And I look forward to you continuing to sink your teeth in your risk assessments, assessments and your audits within the different departments. And based on what you've laid out tonight, I think that you're starting in the right places and, and then into two thousand twenty-two as well. So thank you. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I don't have any questions. I just, I really want to emphasize, you know, we were really looking for a self-starter when we were kind of approaching this position. And I just think we hit the nail right on the head. Every time I run into him at City Hall, he's working on a thousand different things. He's been so proactive, reaching out to us, keeping us aware of what's going on. I just, I really appreciate your effort so far and really satisfied with the job you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Pulis. You know, we, we gave you enough time to see what you, how you'd start out. And you're, I think it's very impressive. I think your risk assessment and your audit plan, from here, once it's approved, you're pretty much an automatic. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. And you'll, you'll report back whenever each of the audits are complete with your findings?
Yes, yes, that's correct. Actually, I'll probably send you, from time to time, I'll send you, the, the board, a stat, an update, a memo, just updating where I'm at with things. Absolutely.
There's no sub-plan or anything like that? For example, let's say you start on clerk collections, for example, there's not a, another hoop that you need to go through with the commission? You just go right into it? Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. That's why, yeah.
I prefer it that way, because you're independent and...
Correct. Once you guys vote on this, it's, it's the authority to, to do all four audits.
Right. And I think on the city attorney, there were some questions concerning comments from residents as far as billables and things like that. And it's just a sensitivity issue that, that I'd had a discussion with Mr. Pulis to at least address that from the residence concerns as well. So there's absolutely no urgency or anything. And I'm sure he, at some point, he'll work out with the city attorney. May not be as part of this effort at all, but at some point, he'll, he'll have some discussions with Mr. Trask and, and we'll come back with that too, if, if we need to. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Oh, I did, I just, Mayor, if you'll let me, I just did, want to say one more thing. If there's, if there, audit plans are always subject to change. So if something comes up and the board wants me to look at, I don't know, library services, let's say, that all you have to do is vote on that and the plan changes. So I want the board just to be aware of that.
Again, thank you, Mr. Pulis. Roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus.
Yes. Item number nine is appointment for budget advisory committee. The terms of Mr. McCloy and Mrs. Hells have been expired, and they wish to, to be reappointed for another term. Also, we have two vacancies due to the resignations. And we can appoint the two alternates to regular members. Need a motion?
A motion to approve as staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. Any commission comments?
No.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus.
Yes, thank you. Number 10 is the appointment to the library board. That's straightforward. The terms of Ms. Scott and Mrs. Hayder expired July first, two thousand twenty-one. And both individuals, they're wishing to be reappointed. So we need a motion?
Motion to reappoint Ms. Scott and Ms. Hayder to another three-year term.
Second.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. Any commission comments? Here none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus.
Yes, thank you. We go into item number 11 is the appointment of commissioner to Homeless Leadership Alliance of Pinellas. We receive a notification from Commissioner Donovan stating that no longer is able to serve on this board and, due to the scheduling conflict. So we need a volunteer to serve on this board. Do we have a volunteer?
I'm on the General Employees Pension Fund, Mayor.
I got several of them.
I know. But you're the mayor.
Just, just if I could provide some backup, as far as the meeting dates go, I started serving on this board as soon as I got elected. So it's been almost two and a half years since I've been on it. They meet on Thursday mornings, typically from like nine-thirty or ten until noon or just past noon. They kind of go how we go. If they have to extend something, they'll extend it. And then you also have to serve on a subcommittee when you're part of the board, and those typically meet on Friday mornings. And those can also meet on the same month. So it could be multiple meetings a month, just so you're fully aware of what you'd be getting into. I've really enjoyed my time on the board. It's just a, a scheduling conflict at this point. So again, if, if anybody wants to take the reins, keep fighting for North County representation on the board, that'd be awesome. But I also understand if, you know, I think we're, gosh, eight months or something like that from the election, if you guys want to punt it until then and then bring it up when the new board gets on.
How necessary is this board?
I mean, I think it's absolutely necessary. It's, it's the homeless leadership board for the county.
I have a question for Commissioner Donovan. How often?
I didn't hear the answer.
No, no worries.
Huh?
Oh, sorry. It, it, it's absolutely necessary. It's the homeless leadership board for the county. There's a lot of funding at stake. Something I've, I've fought for on the board is just more northern representation, because there's twenty-four voting members on the board. So it's a massive board. And currently, out of the twenty-four members, I believe, including myself, only two are based out of anywhere north of Clearwater. So it's a very St. Petersburg, South County-centric board. And so that's something that I've always brought up and, and tried to keep on the forefront, is that, you know, we're here for all the county, not just South County.
The reason I asked the question, because we took funding away from you.
Yeah. And one, one of the reasons, I think, when we were discussing that is, is just that we have the Shepherd Center here, and we weren't giving them any funding at the time. We had the homeless leadership board for the whole county, but a vast majority of their services go to South County and St. Petersburg. That's just kind of the way that the budget ends up at the end of the year. So I think that if we're going to spend three thousand dollars on homeless nonprofit services, I think it's better spent right here, homegrown, at the Shepherd Center. So that, that was just kind of the reasoning behind that. It was just kind of, you know, pick your poison. Do you want something that's going to go to the whole county or right here and stay right here?
Commissioner Vaticiotes had a comment?
Did you say monthly? The meetings were monthly?
It is typically monthly. They, they were going back to bimonthly once, oh, that was kind of before COVID hit. And then they started doing the virtual option again. So it's typically monthly, whether it's the regular session or the subcommittee you have to serve on, or both.
But, but it's virtual, you said?
I believe it still can be, yes. It could be something to chew on, too. It's, it's, it's not urgent. I just wanted to get it out there because...
I think the, I think the subject is, is important. That's not an issue with me. I mean, I, I, I'm really excited about the Shepherd Center, what they're doing with our committee that Chief Young is involved in. And, and I'll be honest with you, I'd like to focus on that effort. And I just, I'm just not sure what our city is going to get out of this by kind of getting ganged up by South County people and not getting much of attention up here for us, except that we have to do what we do on our own in town, I guess is what I'm getting at. I mean, do, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yep. Full disclosure, it is an uphill battle. I, I have a huge amount of respect for the work that the board does. The people on it are fantastic. The support staff, could not be better. So it's, it is a great board, but I think a lot of the times when it comes to funding decisions, funding opportunities, the services that they provide, I think of a lot of it gets stuck down in South County. And so that's something for two and a half years, I've been kind of harping on, is saying, hey, you know, if you want us to give you funding during budget season, whether it's three thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars, some cities give them over a hundred thousand, I believe, I think St. Pete does. You know, they're just, there, there has to be some sort of measurement there. There has to be some sort of, here's what we're doing for the city. Whether it's a brochure that says, here's the services we provide, or whether it's a, a funding thing where they say, hey, here's, here's exactly how we are impacting Tarpon Springs. And that's just something that I've, I've never really gotten a firm answer to in terms of some concrete evidence that I could bring to a budget session and say, hey, here's what they're bringing, this is worth investing in. So, I mean, that was kind of the sentiment is, is where of, you know, if you want to make immediate impact, Commissioner, in terms of Tarpon Springs, and I'd probably stick with the, the Shepherd Center on the issue. But I, I do, again, think it's important that we have some sort of representation long-term on the board.
Right. Mayor, what, what I'd like to do, if it's okay, I mean, it's just a thought to release Commissioner Donovan from, I don't want to call it an obligation, but your, your membership on that board representing the city. But just give me a little time to talk to some of our committee members on the homeless issue committee that Chief Young is involved with, and maybe Ms. Geis, Delgeis from the Shepherd Center, and see what kind of value that we get from having membership on that, that commission and get it, some input from them. And if that, if they feel that there's some value there, and if there's some things that they feel that, that one of the commissioners serving here could help with them, on that, I'd be happy to do that. But in the absence of not getting much out of the time that you spend down there, and of course, the three thousand dollars, it doesn't sound like we get much out of that either, that we sound, it's not a lot of money, but as you said, a nice brochure every now and then would help. I, I don't know why we would want to have a membership on that. I guess what I'm getting at is I'd be happy to do it, but I'd like to have a little more opportunity to meet with a couple of people first to make, before I make that decision.
Okay. Commissioner Terpenny?
Thank you. Commissioner, do you see any staff representation on the board in the, like as a, as a placeholder in the absence of a commissioner?
I don't believe so. They do it for, the, the vast majority of the board isn't elected officials. I think it's only ten spots out of twenty-four that are elected officials. So a lot of people that end up showing up, you know, if, I think one spot is, let's say the sheriff. The sheriff always sends some sort of representative to it. I can't recall seeing any elected officials do that.
I mean, it's more a curiosity question. I wasn't necessarily suggesting that we'd do that. I was just...
We had asked before he got appointed, they said no.
Oh, really? Gotcha. Okay.
You said no, city manager, of course. No on staff. It had to be elected official, because that was the position.
That was their position?
Yes.
They, they have their own, you know, bylaws and stuff like that, that say, certain amount of seats have to be a certain amount of things. Like when I've been on the board, it's twenty-four, but it was mostly just twenty-three because they couldn't fill like a business seat, stuff like that. So they have a specifically allotted criteria.
Gotcha. Okay. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. So Commissioner Vaticiotes, you want to wait, think about, and get some more information on that?
What I'm saying is I'd love to help, but I want to make sure that I am actually helping and, and just discuss it with a couple of people first. So, but at least, I don't know if we have to do anything formally for Commissioner Donovan, or just, you know, just thanking him for his time on that committee is enough at this point. I, I don't know how we would approach that. Do you...
From my understanding, it's just a resignation. You guys don't have to take a vote on anything. I just wanted to bring it up because I'm not going to continue to attend them. So I wanted to get somebody in there that could.
Well, thank you for the time that you spent on that committee.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Well, we need a motion for that. I guess the motion can be to wait till Commissioner Vaticiotes give more information on that.
Just defer, maybe just defer this item for about a month?
Yeah, we could.
Yeah.
Motion to defer until further agenda.
Second.
Defer to when?
A future agenda.
Future agenda. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus.
Yes, thank you. Next is item number twelve, is to authorize settlement of code enforcement lien at five-sixty-eight Grand Boulevard. City Attorney, would you please present this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Before you tonight is an offer of settlement in the amount of three thousand dollars for a code enforcement lien on the property located at five-sixty-eight Grand Boulevard. The code enforcement... The code enforcement lien as of August sixth was valued at seventeen thousand four hundred ninety dollars and thirteen cents. This is a repeat violation case. The property owner had been in violation eight times before the, this particular code enforcement fine was placed. I had provided you with the backup as to the staffing on it and some photographs of the property. The fine was basically for failure to maintain the property under eight dash forty and eight dash fifty-two for a significant period of time. Recently, I've been talking to one of the beneficiaries of the estate. The property is now owned by five children of Mr. James Ingles, who is now deceased. They're trying to figure out what they're going to do with the property. They want to address this particular lien. There is a water lien on the property, by the way, that's not part of this discussion. I've advised them that they needed to pay that in full. But we do have an offer of three thousand dollars in exchange for a release. I think that this is a good settlement in this particular case. There were no life safety issues involved. The property is and has been in compliance, and this would be a good point to clean this one up and have the property, it'll probably be sold. So I'm asking for your authority to accept that offer from James Ingles Jr. in the amount of three thousand dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions also.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Any public comments on this item? Here none? The chair will detain the motion.
Move to settle for three thousand.
Second.
Are there any commission comments? Commissioner Tarrapini?
Just a curiosity question. Mr. Attorney, usually you see some kind of correspondence in writing from the, not applicant, I don't know what the word I'm looking for is, but I guess you've just been discussing this with him via telephone?
It was an email.
Gotcha.
A couple of emails back and forth. We were talking about it. I was previously talking with his sister a couple of years ago about the possibility of a settlement. They did not have the capability of doing it back then. They evidently now have the ability to do it, and that's why the offer came, but it has been, it was basically an email.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other comments? Here none? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarrapini?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item number sixteen, Stormwater Action Plan.
Good evening, Tom, Funtz, Public Works Director. Before I invite Brian Anderson from Neipol and Burgess of Neipol for doing his presentation, just wanted to let you know that I've been working with Brian for fifteen years now? All the time. Couldn't ask for a more professional, better engineer. Bad luck dealing with him for all these years, and it's been a pleasure. Because of a lot of his work over here, the Florida Stormwater Association has given us a fairly decent award over here about standing achievement presented to the Sea of Tarpon Springs Stormwater Program in recognition of initiative, accomplishments, and outstanding commitment to stormwater management practices benefiting the environment and local citizenry. Can't get it out. And that's because of Brian and the work for our Stormwater Department, and I'd like to give this to the mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, that one...
You will accept this on behalf of the Board of Commissions and the people of Tarpon Springs and express my appreciation to the Stormwater Team for doing an outstanding job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. So anyhow, let me get Brian up here. He's going to update the Stormwater Plan. We started back in two thousand and ten, so he's got some really good stuff there.
Thanks, sir. Evening. The controller up here, it's right here. So up and down. We need to connect it up first. Yeah. Not the wifi, but the website, so...
No, I got the website.
Lost it several times tonight.
Here's your help coming right now.
Tech support, tech support.
We're up now. I don't know if it's, it's not on the screen now. I probably just had the presentation. There we go. All right. All right, very good. Thank you. As Tom mentioned, I'm Brian Anderson, I'm with Burgess and Neipol. Since two thousand and nine, I've been, with the exception of about two years, I've been the city's stormwater engineer, so better half of my professional engineering career, and I'm very proud of that. So thank you tonight, Commissioners, City Mayor, and the manager, city manager and the mayor, excuse me. So we primarily support Tony Manello and the Streets and Stormwater Department. We do a lot of work with him. We also work with Renee Vincent with the Planning and Zoning Department. We work closely with Bob Robertson as well, with the Project Administration Department. I'm here tonight just to give a brief overview of the stormwater program that the city received an award for, and it's basically how the development and the management of the city's Stormwater Capital Improvement Program. So I'll direct your attention up here to the slides. The city's got a staff of nine in the Stormwater Department, all certified and trained annually for illicit discharge. They maintain over thirty-two outfalls within the city. They have two primary stormwater goals, and the first one being mitigate the potential for flooding and improve water quality. And they do that through maintaining an active maintenance program with their stormwater management facilities, a street sweeper program. They have a fertilizer ordinance that includes retail sales and application restrictions, monthly reviews, and treatment of aquatic growth control, and they're in compliance with their MPDS permit through Pinellas County and DEP. And they also maintain their Stormwater Capital Improvement Program, which we'll get into a little more here shortly. Noted improvements in water quality include decreasing total phosphorus and total suspended solids within the Anclot River in Saint Joseph Sound, as well as decreasing total nitrogen within Lake Tarpon. Goal number two is inform the public of their part in protecting the stormwater system and surrounding water bodies. They do this through their website, as well as numerous city outreach programs, and through their numerous public meetings they have on all the stormwater capital improvement projects that go through the city. Next. So the, how the city achieves these goals and objectives, they've created their Stormwater Action Plan in two thousand and ten, which resulted in the prioritized Stormwater Capital Improvement Program. The SAP is a living document with the biannual updates to capture additional problem areas and updated the projected cost to assist with the programming of the adequate funding for the capital improvement program. The Stormwater Action Plan, at the heart of this action plan is the flooding complaint analysis. And to review each flooding location using the same lens, we worked with the city in developing grading criteria based on impacts of traffic safety, emergency access, property impacts, environmental, problem documentation, and maintenance. Each of these criteria have a point scale, which results in a total SAP score for each flooding location. This is on the left here, it's kind of hard to see a little bit, it's an aerial, it's a little dark, but on the, this is an aerial overview, just east of us, Penn Street and Levis, in yellow is the proposed flooding, I'm sorry, proposed stormwater infrastructure, and then Cyan is the existing infrastructure that's associated with Tarpon Elementary School. The flooding is actually occurring about a hundred feet east of Levis Avenue, and so what we do with each flooding location is we review them in detail and provide two conceptual solutions. One is shown here, as I just discussed. Using these conceptual solutions, we develop preliminary cost estimates that include survey, geotechnical, design, mobilization, construction, and a twenty-five percent contingency for Next part of this Stormwater Capital Improvement Program is doing the risk of the cost benefit analysis. So following development of the cost estimates, a cost benefit analysis is then performed to assist in determining which solution is the most cost-effective solution for each drainage problem. The cost benefit analysis is developed by dividing the conceptual cost by the project's total SAP score. The alternatives are then sorted from low to high by their total cost per SAP point, which develops the city's Stormwater Capital Improvement Program. This ranking gives priority to those projects that will bring the most benefit to the community and natural systems with the least amount of capital cost. The Stormwater Action Plan has had tremendous success for the city. We've completed over thirty-two capital improvement projects since two thousand and twelve totaling over five point five million dollars in construction. Using this program, the city has had six successful grant applications through the Southwest Florida Water Management District Cooperative Funding Initiative Program, as well as FDOT Highway Safety Improvement Program, and the state totaling over four point four million in design and construction from grant funding to the city to offset design and construction costs. These projects are aimed at improving safety, water quality, and reducing flooding within the community. We know that sustainability is important to the city, and we've been working with Renee with developing, revising the land development code to build in green infrastructure into the land development code, as well as evaluating sea level rise for future projects. We've assisted Paul Smith in his grant to DEP. We were successful in obtaining seventy-five thousand for the vulnerability action, I'm sorry, Vulnerability Assessment Action Plan, which will be evaluating sea level rise with respect to the city's critical assets. We're also working with Bob Robertson and his crew and his staff in developing a scope of services for the future stormwater pump station at the very important Sponge Docks, as well as we've been working with the city in identifying all the locations that are needed for titled check valves that prevent sunny day flooding. And to date, we've installed seven of those in the city, and we have future plans for more of those. With that, I'll open up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. So we're going to go to public comments on this item, then we'll come back. Are there any public comments? Please come forward.
Panayotis Cuyas, five-nine-five Peninsula Avenue. The only reason why I'm going to speak on this topic because coming up with this strategic plan, this comprehensive plan, this is the biggest talked-about topic, concerns for the residents of Tarpon Springs. And I'm happy you guys presented the sustainability. There's one thing missing from there. I'd like to ask his professional opinion if he believes a sustainability coordinator should be hired. I know some of you agree to wanting to hire one, but we did leave out hiring a sustainability coordinator so we can implement the strategic plan with the comprehensive plan and address all these key issues. I'm very happy, looking back at the September Capital Improvement Program of two thousand and twenty to the June two thousand and twenty-first Capital Improvement Program that Phase Two, the Sponge Docks, has been brought up literally eight years. It was going to be twenty, thirty, a redesign, but I think since we got the grant money, now it's been bumped up, so that's a big priority, and I'm very happy to hear that. I did want to point out, there are certain spots with flash rain and heavy rain coming from, you know, right around Sunset Road where Wideview comes into, as well as Riverside and where Riverside and the northern Pinellas Avenue intersect. Those are areas prone to flooding and stormwater issues, and... I'd like to be able to make sure that certain roads regarding this flooding is actually, we get more advice from Mr. Funtz himself, too, on what he recommends on the best interest for the city of Tarpon Springs, as opposed to sometimes commissioners bypassing the city management protocol and requesting certain roads or become top priority for either development or stormwater drainage issues that really benefit certain properties around those roads. So I appreciate everybody where this is going, and it's important, once again, that we have the proper people in place to facilitate this implementation. And the stormwater issues is the biggest priority to the residents of Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Here none? Mr. Anderson, thank you for the presentation. The Stormwater Action Plan is very important. The sea level rise, which is a phenomenon that we won't be fighting for many years to come. And one of the things that we, you know, that we correct in some of those problems is with the check valves. Question that I have is, we have identified some places that still need to be installed. Why is it going to take two years to install a check valve? I mean...
So there are some locations where it could be prioritized, so it happens pretty quickly. There are other locations where there's feature plan improvements, and so buying a check valve now for, say, would existing maybe a twenty-four inch pipe, and then we know in, say, five years, that system's going to be improved, and now there's going to be a forty-two inch pipe there, you're throwing dollars away at a check valve that is only going to be used for five years.
Is it a check valve that you one-time use, or you can actually use it in a different location if you're going to change the diameter of the pipe?
I'd have to default to the manufacturer specs about reusing them. From my experience with the ones that we've installed in the city, if they were installed correctly and there's no manufacturer defects, I could see that they could be, if removed carefully, they could be reused in other locations as long as they fit the diameter of the pipe.
Okay. One area that has been a concern to me, and I discussed that with Mr. Licours and Mr. Funtz, the intersection of North Pinellas Avenue and Athens Street, it floods all the time. And my understanding is it's bigger problem than it looks like to be. Do you have any, any thoughts about that?
Yeah, that's, when you say North Pinellas Avenue, that's alternate US nineteen?
North Pinellas, yeah, the alternate nineteen in Athens, right by the mechanic shop there.
Yes, sir, I'm familiar with it. Yeah, a significant amount of runoff in that location is coming from alternate US nineteen. This location has been brought to our attention as something we need to look at. Tony Manello gave us some information on it just recently, so we will be investigating it. And our approach to it will be delineating the contributing basin areas for that flooding location, and then assigning a percentage of ownership of right-of-way or city property to determine how much runoff is actually coming from DOT property and how much runoff is coming from city property. If it's majority of a DOT issue, if most of the runoff is coming from DOT right-of-way, then we would want to sit down with DOT and ask, hey, can we partner up on some solutions here? If the majority of the runoff is coming from city right-of-way or property, then we would develop a solution and go through the normal action plan procedure that I just discussed here, and developing a conceptual solution, developing the SAP score, ranking it, and then putting it in line with all the others, and see where it falls out into the Stormwater Capital Improvement Program.
Okay. We have a similar scenario on North Pinellas. If you go just a little bit north from there, on, right next to the Mr. Sivlaki Restaurant, the water always, it's always flooded there.
Cedar and East, East Spruce Street.
Right.
Yeah, both of them. It does pond there. I know that Spruce Street has a stormwater collection system at that intersection. I think largely, an issue there is the cross slope in the roadway is so flat that the water can't get to the inlets. It just ponds until it gets high enough, and then the water gets to the inlet, and then whatever doesn't just stays in the roadway until evaporation takes place and it's gone. Cedar Street is another different issue. Cedar Street is another different issue, though. It does not have any infrastructure. So the solution there would be looking at adding infrastructure and tying into whatever existing structure is the closest.
Yeah. You see the water stays there for weeks at times. I mean, that's going to be a muscular attraction.
Yeah, it does. I've seen it over the years. It's just more, and again, it's on alternate US nineteen. So I think historically, we've always viewed those as being issues with department or DOTs right of way and not really the cities. So it hasn't really been on the forefront of us to look at. But we have been given those locations by Tony, and we're going to be evaluating them.
Okay. My last comment and question will be number forty-two. The Sponge Docks flooding stormwater vault pumping station, which is so important. I've been working on that for a long time. And finally, we've got the funding to do that. Is this something that you're going to be involved to organize in the efforts? And, you know, this is very, very important that we include the public, the other business owners, the property owners, the residents, because that's going to affect the businesses and probably it's going to be some bypass for the traffic.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. I was involved with the upfront analysis with the stormwater pump. Well, first, the analysis of evaluating getting the titled check valves in there as the interim solution, ultimate solution, which those three have been implemented at Athens, Mar Farus, and Hope Street. Those check valves are in place and operating correctly. The next phase is, as you mentioned, the stormwater pump station. We did receive the funding. We are working with Bob Robertson now and developing the scope of services for that, for the design and permitting of that project. And the ultimate goal there would be improving the existing system that's on Athens. Athens Stormwater Collection System now is undersized for the amount of runoff it receives. So it'll be an improvement to the Athens Street improvement, I mean, I'm sorry, improvement to the existing infrastructure. And then the addition of the stormwater pump station, which will serve the docks so that they don't flood during a high tide and a storm event.
Right. Well, we correct part of it, but still have the one when it rains, and it's a high tide at the same time.
Yeah, so the titled check valves, they just prevent sunny day flooding that results from the tide rising up through the stormwater infrastructure and flooding the roadway. They prevent that. What they don't do is prevent flooding when it rains at a high tide. And the stormwater pump station will actually resolve that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Commissioner Licouras, you have comments?
Yes. There's got to be a mechanism for, you know, we've got on alternate nineteen. Mayor talked about a couple. There's some down there by MLK in alternate nineteen. That corner, you've got sea level rise that comes up at that corner as well, even though it's like a quarter of a mile away from the bayou, you've got that. You've got water from high tides bubbling up in the little property there in front of Vanity Village, which is an FDOT grade, I would believe. How do we report these things? You know, I'm a big believer in the squeaky wheel gets the oil to FDOT and try and get on there some kind of a list for addressing these things. At least so they understand, one, that they're there, and two, to try and figure out what needs to be done about those. Or is this just a helpless sort of thing?
No, it's not. It's not at all. So Burgess Niple also has the district-wide drainage contract with District Seven. And so we do adjust that. We evaluate flooding complaints that come into the city, I'm sorry, into the department, whether it's from a city or a public or a private owner or a commercial business owner. Those flooding complaints come to us directly. We evaluate them, determine the ownership of runoff, so to speak. Is it a DOT issue or is it a private property issue? Then if it is a department issue, then we develop conceptual solutions and go into design permitting and construction. So if an item was here in the city identified to be under responsibility for the department, then all we would need to do is give them that information, Abdul Waraz, who's the district drainage engineer, say, hey, we've got this issue in the city. Can we sit down and talk about it? So we can actually...
Is there ever any feedback from FDOT to suggest, yes, you're registered now, we're, you know...
Absolutely. Yes, sir. They have a drainage investigation file. They maintain that and as far as it gets entered into a database.
Okay. And how do we do that through, obviously for us through the city manager, but ultimately through Tom Funchen? Is that correct?
Yeah, you could, I can give you the, the city itself could actually give that information directly to Abdul Waraz at DOT. And then he'll channel his staff, or we can file the, you know, the discussion on behalf of the city as well.
All right. Well, I'll pick up with Mr. Funchen later in the city manager on how they want to do that. But my concern is we see these problems. We know they exist. And yet, I don't think we really will, we know the mechanism of how you get them in the hopper, in the system, in the queue to at least get them looked at and addressed, see what we need to do. The other thing is I'm not completely convinced that check valves work. I mean, I'm not, I see what happens down on Athens, and I'll be glad when we get the in-ground vault down there, Athens and Dotocanes. But I'm not completely convinced that they're foolproof in the sense of really keeping all the water out. I think they may help a little bit, but I certainly don't think that they keep the street dry with the flood coming in. I just don't, I've been down there and I've scratched my head because I've not seen rain yet. The streets got water in it. And there's, for example, that happened just about a month ago. I was down there walking just to see this, and I was talking to a couple of people. Actually, the one gentleman that owns a sponge boat down there asked his thoughts on it, and he says, oh, yeah, no, the rain's gone. This is just from the tide. But we'll see a little more about that. The other part, Mayor, I don't know if you mentioned Canal and Park Street, I think, down there on that corner.
Canal?
By Roosevelt. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's one of the places where the check valve is going to go.
Right. That's the one where we've got the check valve on the shelf, as I understand. But we've not installed it yet. Is that correct?
I don't think that's the case. That's a thirty-four by fifty-three inch pipe. I don't believe the city has that valve sitting in their maintenance garage.
You don't have it? I think that gentleman that lives there, remember, he's come up and asked us when we're going to put it in. He understands it's on the shelf, so we haven't, we haven't actually received it or maybe even ordered it yet, or...
I don't believe so. No, sir.
Okay. All right. That's okay, Tom. I think we just, I'll follow up with you on that. Just, I don't know the gentleman, but I know he came up here and he was under the impression that we had it, so, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Tarpani?
Thank you. Brian, thanks for being here. I've had the opportunity to work with Brian for years since I've been up here. Probably one of the most notable projects we worked on was the Bay Shore Heights, as well as many others. So he's definitely a high caliber professional, and we're lucky to have him as a consultant for us. Brian, the mayor touched on the Cedar Street and alternate nineteen. And I know that we have a significant amount of stormwater retention in that area of Cedar Street and Stafford Avenue. You mentioned that there is a, that the Pinellas Avenue is relatively flat there, and until the water reaches a certain point, it can't flow into the stormwater pipe. And is that stormwater pipe on the east side or the west side of alternate nineteen?
At Spruce Street, I believe there's inlets on all four corners, if I'm not mistaken.
Cedar Street.
Cedar Street, there's no infrastructure.
So the stormwater ponds are retention for, like, live oak in Stafford Avenue?
Yeah. Are you talking about the ponds that are east of alternate US nineteen on that loop? Yeah, that's, those ponds serve live oak.
All of those ponds serve live oak?
Yeah, those two, that pond there after the hook or the S-turn there that's on the south side of the road, that somewhere pond serves live oak when it was widened by Pinellas County probably fifteen, eighteen years ago or more. And then the pond, these are ponds on the north that's associated with the development there. That was a private stormwater management facility with the apartment complex on the north side.
Right. So is there an opportunity to create more volume in some of those ponds and at a certain point take some of the water from Cedar and alternate nineteen and move it to the east of those ponds?
There could be. We would need to evaluate the permitted plans and determine if we could regrade that pond to add more volume to provide treatment for that additional runoff and then permit within the guidelines of Swift Mud.
Gotcha. So just for informational purposes, city manager, there's a couple lots, Lot forty-five and forty-four, that are adjacent to some existing stormwater that are for sale, just as an FYI. I saw them the other day. It's listed through some crazy auction site, but it might be something you want to look into. You might already know about it. I don't know. But that would just, you know, be my logical thought. Obviously, I'm not an engineer. But I mean, you know, we already have stormwater retention there. If you could pick up some more surface area and create more volume, you're talking about fifty, hundred, hundred, fifty-two, hundred, two hundred. You're talking about like four hundred feet.
Are those lots on the north side of Cedar?
They're on the north side of Cedar, yeah.
Yeah, that area is like all wetland, it's a swamp, so you're not going to get a whole lot of storage out of the wetland.
Okay. There you go.
And then, yeah, developing, you'd incur impacts by adding fill for the berms and so forth, so...
So it's a good thought, but that's a strikeout.
Yeah, I think I've seen those for sale before.
Yeah, right? I mean, it's crazy, but other than that, I'll just, you know, highlight some of the things that you already pointed out, which is the four and a half million dollars in grant monies that we've gotten for different stormwater projects that you've highlighted. And I just additionally, you know, with the current circumstances of red tide, in your presentation, you spoke about trying to eliminate the nitrogen and phosphorus in the stormwater, and I think that that's important to mention. Other than that, I think you do a great job as our consultant in this area, and we'll keep on trying to alleviate some of the stormwater road flooding and then importantly, keeping the nitrates out of the discharge into the waterways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate all you do. I actually don't have any questions about it. I'm sorry, Mark. I got to put you on the spot. I didn't ask you this in advance. I actually just got reminded by the presentation picture was our stormwater A-frame sign. Is that something that's within our new A-frame sign code? Or I think we might have to update those to be made out of wood or some other material. Do you know offhand if the A-frame signs we use for our stormwater drainage improvement updates are in line with our new code?
If they are, they had to be August second, which was a few days ago. They will be.
Okay, yeah. If you go to page six of the backup, that's just where I saw one of them, and I remembered when we were doing the A-frame signs, I said, it's kind of weird that we're going to ask the businesses to do it, then we're going to have to do it. So that's just to make a note of, but no questions.
There's different criteria for emergency signs, so it might not meet the A-frame, but we'll look at that.
Okay. I'm just warning you. I mean, it's easy ammo for somebody to get up here and say, hey, you're not even in compliance with your own code. But yeah, so just look into that. But other than that, great presentation, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Well, that concludes the regular session agenda. And we're going to go to Staff Commerce. Police Chief?
Yes, sir. Just want to remind everybody that tomorrow our schools open up. Please drive safely around town. Also, a reminder, hands free on cell phones in school zones. Let's keep our kids safe out there.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Mayor, I just want to address one of the issues that has been on the news lately, and that's relative to the monument issue for Cykadia Cemetery. I think that was even on Channel Eight tonight. I just wanted to give you some of the background on that. The individuals that own those two lots are deceased. The wife has been deceased for a number of years. The husband has recently passed away. And unfortunately, the husband failed to leave a process of determining how the monument would be placed on his particular gravesite. So pursuant to the Cykadia Cemetery rules that have been in effect for many, many years, I've been doing your Cykadia Cemetery reviews for twenty-five years. And I'm pretty familiar with the process of what is necessary. We reviewed the rules and we provided the information to the children of the gravesite owner, advising them as to what they needed to do to get the monument. Obviously, we're all interested in doing what is the right thing. I advised the children that they needed to go through the probate process to have the gravesites transferred to themselves so that they would then have the ability to have a monument placed on the gravesite. After speaking to two of the children and their attorney advising that what they needed to do, they decided that they were not going to go that path, that they figured that they would go the emotional path, and they were going to call a investigative reporter and go that route. I did talk to the reporter for a few minutes a couple of weeks ago and advised her what was necessary to have the monument be placed on the gravesite. She was not really interested in finding out what is required under the rules. She was just only interested in pressing the emotional aspect of the family matter that was before us. After having gone over that with her on the telephone, you know, we provided her with the provision and the Cykadia Cemetery rules that required proof of ownership, and I didn't frankly hear anything more. I know that Commissioner Carr, Vice Mayor Carr evidently was interviewed. I don't really, I haven't watched the actual presentation, but it's my understanding that was being played tonight. But I want to let you know that we've done everything the same way. We treat everybody the same way. We understand the emotional aspect and the family aspect of monuments on gravesites, but we just can't be having individuals that are not owners of gravesites place monuments there. We'll run into issues with other family members. Maybe the monument's not tall enough. Maybe it's the wrong color. Maybe it has the wrong information on it. What we try to do is to get the ownership established, and then there is no question about that. And so that's what we attempted to do here, but unfortunately, the children did not want to go that path. So I just want to let you know that we've done everything that is required under the rules, and I think that we've taken the best position, and that is to apply the rules to everybody the exact same way and don't make exceptions, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions about it if you have questions.
Thank you. Mr. Licouras, any comments?
I have a lot of them, but I'll keep them short. As you know, I have a history from policing and stuff with the reporters and how they operate. Unfortunately, some of the reporters you've seen that are out for the good of the people and stuff aren't really out for that. They're out for the story and the sensationalism of the story. That particular reporter was given instances and told to check on things that could happen. Fortunately, all you know that families and people do not all agree with what goes on with their loved one's grave. If you don't have somebody designated to be in charge of what can go on a loved one's monument or son's cemetery, and Irene's been dealing with the situations where there are disagreements, if you have something, unfortunately, in my family, I have the same thing. If you just let somebody without any authorization put something on there, you are putting in the city in the middle of a big problem. And she was given some instances of, well, what if this happened? What if a relative on somebody's grave, one of the kids, wanted to put this on a grave or this thing and didn't have authorization? You know, what would it be like? What would it be for the rest of the family who's going to be absolutely object? So there was a lot of things given to this reporter to look into and to consider, not just this case, because this is an unfortunate case, but in knowing over all these years that Irene and I have worked on some of the disputes between family of one wanting one thing and one wanting another. If that's not gone to court, probate and the court established, and who has the authority to do that? What Channel Eight should have done is give a lesson on how people and family needs to make sure their parents, their relatives have wills, have designations, designate these things in advance, and do a good justice to people to educate on that. Instead, they want to sensationalize the fact that we don't want to give a veteran a headstone, which is not the circumstance, is not the case. And it's just, you know, one of those type of stories you see from the art of journalism that was slanted, and I don't think represented the true story of the whole thing. So that's about it I have to say about it.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Tarpani?
No comments, Mayor.
No comments, Mayor.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, just one quick one. Uh, Junior Spongers Football and Cheer is back. Uh, it was just over two years ago that they came here, uh, and a lot of people were upset about the fact that they had, uh, gone defunct due to the last second registration, um, issue with their current league. And then you had COVID the next year. So if you see or know any volunteers with Junior Spongers, go ahead and thank them, uh, ask what you can do, maybe donate, uh, because they are back. They just actually played their first jamboree kickoff, uh, in Dade City. So part of the Pasco League now. They're back in full force. So, uh, thank a volunteer if you see them.
Good. Commissioner Velcic?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, actually, in, in, uh, respect to, uh, the city attorney Trask's comments, I went through that with my family, um, as well. So it, uh, with cemetery, in regard to cemetery. So I can guarantee you, everyone is treated fairly, um, in that regard. Um, it wasn't painful. It's just something that had to be done and, and quite frankly, I feel much better about it now that it's behind us. So, uh, the second comment was, um, during the break, I found out that, from Mr. Funchen, um, that, um, on our yard waste, uh, you know, those of us that live on the west side of alternate nineteen gets picked up on Monday, those that live on the east side of alternate nineteen gets picked up on Thursday, as it is right now under the contract. So, um, the, the point is, I think in addition to the outreach to the community, to the residents as part of the waste sanitation contract, there ought to be some education on our parts, exactly what the situation is right now, so that we're, we're understanding what we're asking for is, uh, is maybe what we're not asking for, or in other words, confusing with what's going on right now and not understanding everything, that, all the details of it, so that, um, yard waste is picked up on Tues, Thursdays in some parts of town, some parts it's picked up on Mondays. And I think that's what Waste Pro is saying. So I want to be fair about everything and make sure we, we have the right details when that matter comes back to us for two weeks. Uh, maybe a point paper or something like that. I'll leave that up to you, uh, City Manager LaCorus with Mr. Funchen. Thank you.
Thank you. I got a couple of things that, uh, um, first I'd like to extend my deepest condolences to the family of Dr. Picos, the passion of his mother, Mary Vaporis Picos. Um, she was a, a very, very nice lady. I knew her very well and, uh, may her memory be eternal. And I'm wishing, uh, Dr. Picos' family peace, strength during this difficult time. It's very, very difficult to lose your mother. Uh, also, uh, like to say that I've received complaints from the business people, including the president of the Emergent Association about the A-frame signs. Uh, the complaint is that the, the chalk signs are washing off from the rain and they have a problem with it. Um, perhaps we need to take a look at the, uh, come up with some kind of a solution, Mr. LaCorus, and, uh, discussed it very briefly with our city attorney. Um, Mr. Trask, what is the recommendation that if we're going to look at something like that again?
So obviously if you're going to, uh, address the A-frame signs and you want to make a change, that would require an ordinance because the A-frame sign requirements are set forth in the code by ordinance. So it would be my suggestion to ask the city manager to review the issue with his staff and come back with a recommendation as to how to move forward, either how to address it, um, or how, how to revise the code to address the issues of the chalk washing off. Um, and then the commission would give direction to staff or I on how to move forward ordinance-wise.
Okay. Mr. LaCorus, would you please look at that?
Yes, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody, when we set these rules in place, we had a lot of deferment of them. It's probably been a year since we passed this. We did the last six-month extension. We warned everybody, there were six months. We warned them ahead of time and August second was the day that we started enforcing your ordinance you put together. So, so we will look at the issues, but again, it's, it's, we're going forward with, with what this board, um, chose to do and put into effect, so.
If you please reach out to the, uh, to the Emergent Association.
We've already heard from them. So we've heard from them for the last year about them not liking the ordinance. So we are, we already know what the issues are and, and they're not agreeing with what ordinance this board passed. So, you know, whatever you want.
And also I would like to emphasize what our, uh, police chief said about, uh, the Pinellas County Schools will open tomorrow and, um, please all drivers be very, very careful. There'll be a lot of kids on the road. Uh, actually, after a year later, we're gonna have the schools open. So I hope everybody's safe. And that concludes the regular session meeting and is adjourned at ten thirty-eight PM. Good night, everybody.
Please, sir.
Shoot, I don't forget it this time.
Getting better, Mayor.